Try it again. Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Select Board September 7, 2021 meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording this meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, until April 1, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and conference ID number 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And again, welcome, everyone. I'm going to remind everyone to please mute your mics and turn off your cameras. And let's start with a roll call. Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Mitters.
Present.
Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair, Peter Kokolos, is present. Let me quick overview, as we do every time. The first thing we'll do after this are our minutes, and then we'll have public announcements and agenda item requests, which includes people like to talk about what events are coming up or asking for an agenda item. We then start our new business. First thing is coronavirus, and after that will be Chatham Wells and the PFAS Water Supply, and in both of those, there's public comment. We then go into our public comments on a business, on the business agenda that we will have. Before we get to the business agenda, we have a public hearing, which is on tax classification, and public input is allowed at that time. Then we get into the business agenda, a proclamation for September is a suicide month, and a request for temporary closure of an established homing alcohol license, a Pleasant Bay Alliance update, and then we consider a date for calling a special town meeting and warrant articles, and we end up with capinny appointments. So, let's start with the minutes of our last meeting, August 24. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, on page two, under Roman numeral two, third paragraph, second to last line, there's a parenthesis that says, "Now Chair," I'd like to strike the word "now" and substitute the word "former."
Yeah.
Chuck is the former chair. And then on page nine, under D at the top, the second paragraph in that section, first line where it says, "The board showed support for this motion," I'd like to strike the word "motion" and substitute the word "position." There was actually no motion that was offered. Those are my edits.
Thank you, Dean. Anyone else? I have none, then. Take a vote.
Rest.
Yes.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, passed. Okay, our next is our public announcements and agenda item requests. First thing I'll do is go to the board. Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to recap a couple of my previous requests. First is the conversation about reducing the membership of the cultural council. Just a short little recap, there are nine-member committee, they currently have seven openings. I know later tonight, we have two potential candidates that we might be placing on the cultural council, and even if we are successful later tonight, we're still going to be deficient of having enough for Quorum. So, I think doing that in a timely manner would be beneficial for them to at least start meeting again, and then we can discuss changing the elevating larger membership maybe in the future, but that's something I'd like to get done in a timely manner.
Okay.
Second is, my understanding is, town staff, maybe a member of this board, might have had a meeting on the Eldridge Garage drainage kind of property, so I know I'd like to get, you know, get a full board update on that, hopefully in September. That would be also greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
And then, lastly, and forgive me if it's on the pending, but I didn't see it, I thought I made a request for a conversation about board committee processes, about how we do interviews and timelines of candidates, et cetera, so kind of an inclusive type of overview of our interviewing and recruiting process. I didn't happen to see it, but if it is on there, forgive me, but if we could get that done sometime early this fall, I would appreciate that also.
Right.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. From the public, I know Ms. Moran wants to speak. Yes. And then, I know Tom. Anyone else in the public here besides those? Okay. Oh, I have one? I don't see it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
So, hello. My name is Chris Morin, and I'm the Director of Prevention, Education, Outreach with Independence House. As you probably know, we serve the survivors and family members of domestic and sexual violence. First of all, I'd just like to thank the Town of Chatham for your ongoing support financially as well as everything else over the years. Letters have been sent out to town managers and select board members, which I hope you have received, but tonight is a personal invite. We are hosting a prevention conference on October 1st. It's called "So Much Abuse, Let's End It Together." It's to be held virtually. Most of the prevention work that has been done in this field has been on an individual relationship level, teaching individuals the dynamics of abuse, what to do, what are the signs, that type of thing. What we need now is to focus locally on primary prevention, creating environments where, before the violence, you know, happens, excuse me, where we can be more confident that people are safe in their relationships, at home, at school, at play, in any environment. In the last 18 months, there have been three domestic homicides on Cape Cod. What could have been done to prevent the sommel homicide? And just as important, what could have been done on a community level where the abuse would have been seen and addressed sooner? The conference will not immediately prevent domestic and sexual violence. We know that one of the biggest tools that abusers have is silence. Silence keeps abuse alive. So, the conference goal is to give community members the tools and resources to have the courageous conversations about how do we do this work together. As children or adults, we go to school or take classes, join clubs, play sports, maybe be part of a faith community. Each of these groups is a community in itself, and each of them need to have safeguards in place to prevent violence. So, how do communities prevent domestic and sexual violence? First of all, we'd like to, we need to make a commitment for prevention, and we need to make it a priority. The content of the conference will be addressing organizational policies that address such issues as hiring practices, whistleblower policies, accountability for inappropriate behaviors. So, as the major decision-makers of Chatham, we hope that you can join us October 1 and be part of this courageous conversations. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Clark. I'm a member of the Charter Review Committee. I've been asked by the Chair, John Carr, to provide a brief status report to the Select Board, Town Manager, and residents of the Town of Chatham. First, I want to thank the Select Board and the Town Manager for their input to the committee. Your input has been most helpful. Second, on Tuesday, September 14, the committee will hold its final meeting dedicated to input from residents of Chatham about the existing charter. The meeting will start at 3:30 PM next Tuesday, a week from today. If any resident wishes to testify at the meeting, please contact Julie Smith, the Chatham Town Clerk, and let her know of your interest. We can then schedule a time certain for any presentation. To provide maximum protection for those whose households contain immune-compromised or vulnerable individuals, as does a member of our committee, our meetings are held virtually. Please see the published agenda for specifics on logging in by computer or by telephone. The committee will also accept written communications conveyed either by snail mail or email. Send such communications to Julie Smith, the Town Clerk, so that it can be provided to the committee members and made part of the written record. Emails should be addressed to jsmith@chatham-ma.gov. Snail mail should be addressed to Julie Smith, Clerk, Town of Chatham, 549 Main Street, Chatham 02633. You may also drop off letters at the Town Clerk's office at 549 Main Street. Again, the meeting will be held Tuesday, September 14, starting online at 3:30 PM. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else from the audience? Okay, I see one hand up online. Looks like Elaine Gibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a request for tonight's meeting. I was wondering if the Select Board would allow comment during the discussion of the warrant articles. I have some questions because I'd never seen them before, but I'd rather wait to hear what people say so that maybe I don't have any questions. So, I would hope you'd allow that tonight, since these are the first time we're seeing them. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any specific ones in our package.
You do. You have the two drinking water.
Oh, the drinking water, okay. I take it back. All right. Dean, comment? No?
No, I would support that request.
Okay.
I would support that request. I have the mic off.
I have no issue with that.
Fine with me.
I have no issue.
Okay. All right, we'll do that, and thank you, Elaine. We'll take comments during that agenda item. All right. First thing up now is a coronavirus update. It's Dr. Bob.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, and members of the public at home. So, here's our bi-weekly, weekly now, I guess, again, coronavirus update. As you know, we had stopped doing these for a while, but unfortunately coronavirus is not going away, as I think many of us may have hoped it would have done earlier this summer, so we have restarted them recently just to keep people updated. So, let me share my screen here, and I will show you the first graphic. This is our graphic of monthly confirmed cases since the beginning of the COVID pandemic back in March of 2020. So far this month in September, we have had eight cases of COVID-19 confirmed in Chatham residents. The interesting comment is, we had eight cases in all of last September. So, last September, we had eight cases in total for the month. So far this year, we've had eight cases, and we're only up, this is data through the end of yesterday, so as of the 6th of September, we are meeting the number of cases that we had all of last year. And that's consistent with what we saw back in August, where this year, we had 24 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in August, and last year, we only had four cases in the entire month. So, we are definitely seeing the impact of the Delta variant going on that we're seeing across Massachusetts, across the Cape, and nationally as well, with a big, huge uptick in cases. We're now averaging about 150,000 cases a day in the United States. Of those eight cases that we've had so far in September of this year, four of those have been in vaccinated individuals, so so-called breakthrough cases. One case is an unvaccinated individual, and three cases, we don't have any information on yet as to whether or not they were vaccinated or unvaccinated. The cases are new, they are being, they are in the contract tracing process, but the state's website has not been updated with any definitive information about three of those cases' status. So, that's where we are in terms of the total number of cases in Chatham. I suspect, unfortunately, we will see that September of this year, we will see an uptick in cases similar to what we saw last month. Now, switching over to average daily incident rate, and this is data as of the 2nd of September, remember, this data only comes out once a week, and it's usually at least a week behind. So, this is data that was posted last Thursday on the 2nd, and you can see that we, after we were down basically at zero in late July, now we're seeing that uptick in August and a higher uptick in September. So, you know, it looks like we're heading towards another peak. Looking at percent positivity in Chatham, we have this graph here, and again, this is through the 2nd of September, and you can see it pretty much mirrors what we see in the average daily incident rate, but the more interesting thing here is, we are rapidly approaching that 5% mark. Generally, in epidemiological terms, if the percent positivity in a community is less than 5%, it means that the outbreak is under control. When it's above 5%, it generally means the outbreak is unabated. And as of last Thursday, we were rapidly encroaching upon that 5%. I think the actual number was about 4.7. So, it will be interesting to see what we get for a percent positivity rate this week if we bump over that 5% threshold. I did want to just touch on one last thing here. This is the statewide confirmed cases by age. This was data reported last week. It's always a week behind again, and it's for the previous two weeks, but the important thing to note here is, again, we have that 20- to 39-year-old age demographic, which are accounting for almost 40% of the cases, as well as we are seeing an uptick in the case numbers on a percentage basis in people younger than 19. You know, and that mirrors what we're seeing nationwide. There has been a huge increase in pediatric cases nationally. We're seeing the same thing in Massachusetts. And, you know, that's worrisome, because as you know, youth under the age of 12 are not eligible for the vaccine, although hopefully that will be changing before the end of the year. Kids are now back in school, and we've gotten reports nationally of a number of school systems that have had to shut down again or switch back over to remote learning because of substantial numbers of outbreaks in that school-age demographic. And as you can see, the older demographics, you know, their percentages are dropping off because more of them are vaccinated and taking the appropriate precautions, but we're seeing the commensurate uptick in the younger demographic. So, I will stop sharing my screen, and then just finally, I just wanted to touch on a couple of other quick things, because I know you have a very busy meeting tonight. We are aware of positive COVID cases at Pates Marion's Pie Shop and CBI over the last, say, week and a half to 10 days. They have notified us, as they're required to do under the Board of Health's order. They are all taking the appropriate precautions and have either isolated or quarantined the positive individuals, as well as they are also testing other individuals that work in their various establishments. So, so far, we have no indication that any of these cases have resulted in a so-called cluster, but they are all being handled appropriately. And then the final thing that I just wanted to touch on is, over the weekend, I received an email regarding a cluster, regarding a rumor of a cluster of cases at the Department of Public Works that was not being reported. And I just want to ensure the board, assure the board as well as the public that that is simply not the case. There was an incident back in August where one individual working for our sewer contract operator, Weston Sampson, tested positive. Weston Sampson, through their HR department, did all the appropriate contact tracing, and no other positive individuals were identified. During a sewer event downtown, a couple members of the town staff were in close proximity to this individual. However, it was outside. They did not meet the criteria for a close contact, but erring on the side of caution, I had instructed both of those individuals, we were going to have them tested, and until they got their test results back, they were to wear a mask indoors and around other people. I'm happy to say that both individuals did get tested, and their test results came back negative. So, there is no outbreak in the DPW that has not been reported to the public, or this board, or the Board of Health. Had there been such an instance, believe me, you would have been made aware of it as soon as we became aware of it, and the appropriate steps would have been taken, just like the incident we had earlier this summer, where we had a positive individual in the community center, and we subsequently had all their staff tested. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Dr. Bob, this is Peter. Just a real quick one on it. You may have, I may have missed it, but is there, can you identify whether or not the individuals in Chatham, were either vaccinated or not vaccinated?
As I indicated, the eight cases, eight confirmed cases so far this month, four of those have occurred in vaccinated individuals, so they are so-called breakthrough cases. Three, we don't know specifically whether or not the individual is vaccinated or unvaccinated, and one individual was not vaccinated.
Okay. Thank you. Shereen, and then Dean.
So, Dr. Bob, with the uptick of the, of test, of positive testing and stuff, I had heard that the Falmouth Fairgrounds is doing testing again, as well the possibility of a site in Eastham perhaps opening next week, aside from getting it from, you know, you can get a test, you know, from your healthcare organizations and whatnot.
Right. The Falmouth Fairgrounds testing site is open again. It's open on Thursdays, I believe, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and the county is looking at restarting a testing site in New Orleans, Eastham area. That has not, we haven't gotten definitive specifics on exactly where it's going to be and what the hours are yet, but I expect that information to be coming out soon.
Okay, thank you. And we also know that vaccination and masking is the best prevention of getting contact. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Bob, for your report. A couple of questions with respect to the H-Chatham cases. Do we know if they are symptomatic or asymptomatic or a combination?
It was a combination. Most of the ones that did report symptoms, they were very mild, no hospitalizations. So, you know, that's been pretty consistent with what we've seen, especially in individuals that are vaccinated. They have very mild symptoms, but, you know, they, they generally reported things like, you know, stuffy nose and, you know, headache and things like that.
How about the age demographic for that group of eight people?
The age demographic ran from, the youngest was 27, the oldest was 76, and they were all pretty well spread out there. There were two, 127, 132-year-old, 250 in the 50 age demographic, two in the 70s, sorry, three in the 70s, and one in the 40-year-old demographic. So, pretty much spread across the board.
With respect to the state, are you still having the weekly conference call with the Department of Public Health? Is that still going on?
Yes, that still goes on this week because of the holiday. The call did not take place today. It's taking place Friday.
Do you have any information from that or other sources about the state of hospitalization and mortality in Massachusetts right now?
Yeah, mortality hasn't gone up significantly recently, and I think that's a fact that, you know, so many people in Massachusetts are vaccinated. Our hospitals are getting fuller, not as many in the ICUs as earlier. I looked at those numbers just prior to the meeting, but the number of hospitalizations is increasing, but again, not resulting in ICU admissions and not necessarily resulting in intubations, because a lot of the people are vaccinated.
And?
Yeah.
And final question, sort of tangential to this, is the town going to be providing flu shot clinics this year? I know we didn't do it last year, I think.
No, we did have flu clinics last year. We will be, we're working with the VNA right now to set up timing for flu clinics this year as well. Yes.
Is there a dominant flu vaccine strain? I know in the past, there have been, I guess it's a matter of dosage, stronger dosage for seniors versus lesser dosage. Are they going to do that again this year, do you think?
Yes, we are going to do that, and we specifically bought some, the town specifically bought some of the higher dosage for the elderly folks, or for the older folks, I should say.
Okay.
Yes, we will be making that available.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Dean. Anyone else? Nope. Anyone in the public? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Bob.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, there's an update on PFAS. Who do we have? Who's?
Mr. Chairman, we have Dr. Bob and Tom Barr from Weston Sampson. He's the Water and Sewer Superintendent.
All right, thank you. I know that Tom is not available. All right. Hi, welcome.
All right. Peter, I'm going to, I'm going to start it off.
Okay.
And let me share my screen again, and I will give you the latest test results. These were not included in your packet because we were waiting Friday to get the latest test results from the lab, so hopefully everybody can see the spreadsheet that I have up on the screen. Like, is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So here's the latest set of test results. There was one set of test results back on the 24th out of well number eight. And what I did here to make it a little bit easier to to see things was I highlighted in yellow any of the test results that are approaching the maximum contaminant level. As you know from previous discussions, the maximum contaminant level in Massachusetts set by DP last October is twenty parts per trillion. And as you know, earlier in April, we had a number of wells, April and May, wells five and well five specifically had a number of samples that were individually over that that MCL. And that has carried forward now for well five in both the raw water as well as the treated water. And both of those, when you average all the results that have been obtained so far, one's at eighteen point nine, the other's at seventeen point six. So they are, they are, you know, approaching that MCL number of twenty. The concerning thing to me is in a set of samples taken on the 24th of August out of well number eight, as you all remember, wells five and eight are geographically adjacent to each other. Well five has been turned off since last April, but we have continued to use well eight. And so far, the results out of well eight up through mid-July were pretty good. They were, they were less than half of the MCL. However, in the last set of test results taken back on the 24th of August, well, we take two samples. As a scientist in me, I'm always, I always like to see two samples taken as opposed to just one, that way you have a better sense that what you're looking at are real numbers. So both of these samples that were taken out of well eight back in August 24th, one was at seventeen point nine and one was at seventeen point eight. Those are the highest levels that we've seen coming out of well number eight. And as I say, it is rapidly approaching the MCL of twenty. So that, to me, is very concerning. We're going to be re-sampling well eight and five again. In fact, some samples were taken today. We've asked the lab to expedite their turnaround. So hopefully, again, we'll have those results before the end of the week. And then we've also requested, or the Water Division has requested additional bottles from the lavatories so that we can do additional testing. What I've asked to do from now on is test both the raw water as well as the treated water at well five and eight at the same time. So we don't have, in this case, we have some results from the 24th, we have some results from the 31st. I would prefer to be sampling both wells on the same day to alleviate any concerns about any change in atmospheric conditions or anything like that that might potentially impact the results. All the chances of that are extremely small. So that's currently where we stand in terms of the latest PFAS results. And then let me just show you one other figure here quickly. And this is the USGS groundwater levels at two of the monitoring wells. One is CG one CGW 138R, which is the one in Chatham at the intersection of Route 137 and Main Street. And then the other one is BMW 22R in Brewster. And these are the two closest USGS monitoring wells where groundwater is monitored on a continuous basis. And I just wanted to show this to you. You know, we've had a relatively rainy period this summer, including our deluge last week. But as I'm sure many of you know, while other parts of the Cape, Falmouth, Hyannis got over four inches of rain, we only recorded an inch and a half of rain last week at the Chatham Airport. And that was borne out by gauges. We also have the wastewater treatment plant as well as the shellfish gauge that we use. So even though we've had a fairly rainy season, which has helped drop demand to some extent because individual people don't need to water their lawns as much, so far, unfortunately, it is not doing anything for the groundwater levels. And as you can see, towards the end of July here and going into August, both the Chatham monitoring well and the Brewster monitoring well are continuing their downward trend. So so far, we have not seen any impact of this rainy weather replenishing the groundwater level. So that is, you know, that is something we worry about. If it continues into the fall and we don't get a huge snowmelt this winter, I hate to say it, but next year could be even worse. And so with that, we have Tom Barr with us tonight who was going to give a an update to you on what's been going on with some of the other wells, wells 10 and 11 as well as well four. So over to you, Tom.
Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Bob. So yeah, so Bob touched base on all of the PFAS. We did take a couple of samples today from well eight, both raw and treated. And we'll be taking more samples from well five and eight later this week. So we'll have some more results for that. So to touch base on some of the other things that we have going on, as mostly you know, well four is being rehabbed right now. We have Weston and Sampson's CMR Division taking care of that for us. To give you an update on that, all the day tanks, chemical feed pumps, flow charts, pH monitors, chlorine analyzers have all been installed. We were having issues with delays in production for those, but we have all of them. They are at the site, they're being installed. They're continuing the work, we're hoping to have it up and running within the next week or two. We'll do a test run, we'll have to do a couple of samples out of there, make sure everything's looking good. Once that's approved, then, once all the samples come back and all the analyzers are working properly, all our chem feed pump dosages are correct, then we'll be able to give those numbers to DEP. They can approve the well. And then from there, the Select Board would make their decision on if we were to use that well. What we would like to use that well for is redundancy so that we can take some other wells offline and do some maintenance on them, change out chemical feed lines. With the rising numbers of well eight being a concern for us, we'd also like to maybe take that well offline for a while, use well four to supplement it. So that's where we are with well four. And then as far as wells 10 and 11, as you know, we'll be talking about the special town meeting later today. But we're looking to get wells 10 and 11 put online. They were installed a while ago, back in 2010. The wells were first drilled, the casings were put in. We performed some prolonged pump tests. It ended up coming back with MBTE, which is a byproduct of gasoline. We've since taken more tests from that well, did a prolonged pump test again in 2017, 18, and those results came back with no detect of the MBTE. So that's why that well is now considered a safe well to use and we want to try to get that onboard. So if we don't have a lot of rain and snow this offsea, this winter, that will have those wells to help us with the demand for the water supply. So that's where we are with those wells. And then we have the five and eight wells that we've been talking about. We'll be looking for a special town meeting as well as for them to be putting iron and manganese and PFAS removal on there so that we can get those wells operating. So that's, that's where we are with the water. As Bob said, the water that we are supplying is safe. It is below the MCL for the twenty parts per trillion. Well five is staying offline, well eight is being closely monitored. And if we feel that we'll need need to take that well off, we'll take that well off. But other than that, our other well supplies, self-Chatham wells have come back non-detect the whole time, every sample we've taken from them. And then the water treatment plant over on Morton Road, which is supplied by wells six, seven and nine, that has come back non-detect. So our water supply on that side of town is definitely safe. And with well eight showing a little rise in the numbers, we're definitely going to keep a close eye on that. So that's, that's what I have. The pumping, as Doc, as Dr. Bob mentioned, our demand is down a bit. For the month of August, we were down fourteen percent from last year at this time. So that's telling me that the water restrictions are working to a degree and that the small rain events have helped it, so people aren't watering as much. So that's where we're at with that. So I guess the one thing I would do, Mr. Temple wanted to recommend to the board that if we could vote today or put it on the docket to think about is when the results for well four come back, once we perform all our testing, get everything up and running and Mass DEP approves the use of that well, that we get the Select Board to approve the use of that well is, so that we can get that online as soon as possible so we can start supplementing the other water supply, take some of them offline. So any questions?
Okay, thank you, Tom, any from the board? Let me go with Jeff first and then Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Mr. Barr and Dr. Dunkinson. You know, good report, I, I'm struggling a little bit with some of it. Now, do you think it's because we're pumping eight that the levels are high and we're not pumping five and the levels are low? I seem to recollect or you guys mentioned that, you know, pumping may kind of incite this stuff or draw it into the well. So I don't know if there's any correlation there at all. And then is the operative plan for when four does get approved by DEP to kind of take eight offline then? Or would be, would be be able to take it offline before then if, say, today's test results come back above the twenty?
Yeah, so. Go ahead, Tom.
Go ahead, you can go. Go ahead, Dr. Bob.
I was just going to say, in answer to your first question, Jeff, you know, why we're suddenly seeing this rise in well eight that we haven't seen before. It absolutely could be because well number five is not on in pumping. Well five is shallower than well eight is, meaning, you know, it draws from closer to the surface. Now that well five has been offline basically since April, if there is a contaminant that's up towards the surface, which is where, you know, you would expect it to be, it's perfectly feasible that well number eight is now starting to pull that down to the deeper aquifer where we're starting to see it in well eight. It could also be that well eight is now pulling from a further distance horizontally where well five drew that water in sooner than well eight did. But I suspect it's more a factor of the depth. But yes, absolutely, it could just be we're seeing this uptick in well eight because well five is not online at the moment.
Interesting. Just as a macro comment, I can't, I keep going back to this and I apologize in advance, but I know we have a plan for for four coming online and then perhaps dealing with eight and five. And we have a plan for 10 and 11 and we have a plan for a treatment plan, et cetera. But longer, longer term. And I go back to a comment that was made at the Select Board meeting that, hey, we've got enough water in this lens, we just got to get out of the, out of the ground. Well, I keep going back to the question, do we need to plan for another well or two longer term? Not necessarily, you know, in the next fiscal year or, but even longer term. If if there's enough well, you know, enough water, I should say, in this lens, in the monomoy lens, then I keep going back to, I want another well then. And I want, and I want a position where I think it would be most advantageous to draw the most water.
Let me, let me answer that because
I am not an expert.
But wells 10 and 11 or proposed wells 10 and 11, they are the result of exactly that study that was done back in the early nineties. Back then, the town did a study looking at the entire, the entirety of the community. Multiple test wells were drilled at various locations to look at both water quality as well as water quantity and to look at meeting the needs of the town, say, over the next fifty years. The upshot of that study was the recommendation to pursue wells 10 and 11. A number of the other sites that were looked at, the Goose Pond property and several other locations around town, they had issues primarily with high iron and manganese. So right out of the gate, some of those other locations were going to cost much higher, have much higher cost attributed because, you know, from day one, they would need an iron and manganese facility, which as you all know, that we just completed the one at close to twelve million dollars. So at the time, wells 10 and 11 showed the best water quality and the best water quantity being in the northwest corner of town, meeting up with Harwich where there was already a lot of protected land on both sides of the the town borders. And at the time, originally, we didn't know that there was any MTBE and that it subsequently came in when there was additional prolonged pump tests and it was detected. So exactly the study you're talking about was done and that's the result of, you know, we're now pursuing 10 and 11. It's conceivable based on, you know, town projections of water use going forward that some of those other locations might be looked at again, such as, you know, the Goose Pond property and there were, there were a couple of others, you know. But again, they would cost a lot more to bring those online. Other than that, you know, there weren't a lot of other locations identified in Chatham because, you know, as you know, we're surrounded on three sides by water. So one of the concerns that we have is, you know, if you start pulling a lot of groundwater out, are you going to cause issues with saltwater intrusion where you start drawing saltwater into those wells? So, you know, we're really looking at the area inside of Route 28, if you will. You know, that kind of interior part of Chatham. And we didn't identify a whole lot of good sites, unfortunately. You know, Chatham is a relatively small area geographically and when you take away everything outside of Route 28, there isn't a lot of area left where we don't already have wells or we're proposing things like wells 10 and 11. So hate to take so long, but I think it was important for you and the folks at home to know that that study has already been done and that's why we're really pushing to get 10 and 11 online as quickly as possible.
Yeah, that was very helpful, Bob, I appreciate those comments and and kind of a retrospective look, historical look at the rationale for 10 and 11. I totally understand intuitively why you kind of look to the interior and look to the northwest portions of town and, and, you know, and away from from the coastline, if you will. One follow-up on 10 and 11 then. When, as soon as we can, are we going to test 10 and 11 again as soon as there, we can draw upon them in the very near term before we get too excited?
Yeah, right now, 10 and 11, the only thing we have at 10 and 11 are the well casings. So there's no pumps or anything installed there. When the, when the prolonged pump test was done a number of years ago, the contractor that was doing it, they actually bring the pumps in, put them in the well for the period of time that they're doing the prolonged pump test. Right now, there is no way to pump a large volume water out of 10 and 11 other than bringing in a contractor like that on a, you know, on a temporary basis. So one of the things is to go ahead and actually install the pumps into 10 and 11, into the casings and be in a position where we could, we could test. And obviously, we could go in and we could retest some of the the monitoring wells that are in that area. But as Tom alluded to, Tom Barr, you know, we've, we were, we were watching the MTBE issue. MTBE luckily is one of those compounds that does break down naturally over time as well as it moves away from the wells because of the groundwater flow. And so that's no longer an issue. And we don't have any indication yet of PFAS up in that area. Not to say it may not be there. And one of the things that that Weston and Sampson is going to be doing with their design for well 10 and 11 because we have to treat for iron and manganese, but make sure that the building or the facility that's constructed could be easily retrofitted to remove PFAS at some point in the future if it's deemed necessary.
Okay, thank you. And I just thought the savings is fairly impressive at fourteen percent. Like to see it continue, but those are, that was good data. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question, I think, is for either Bob or Jill or both. I'm looking at Tom Temple's memo in the agenda packet, in the meeting packet. And he talks about the PFAS groundwater modeling and contamination source inventory study. So that's a study to try to identify where the PFAS is coming from. It says awaiting proposals. Do you have an update on the timing of that?
We actually have been speaking with the folks. We have a proposal in from Weston and Sampson. We are currently waiting for another one from another nationwide. and Sampson. We are currently waiting for another one from another nationwide facility or unit that has the capability to do it. We've shared the data with them. Hopefully, we'll see that either the end of this week or next week. We're actually looking at some contract language with them. We sent them a draft contact. They came back. Town council reviewed it, had some comments. We sent it back to them. So, hopefully, you know, within 10 days to two weeks, we will have a proposal from them that we'll be able to evaluate and then make a decision which way we're going to go with that study.
Okay, and the town manager will make that decision ultimately?
Yes, and if, if for some reason there's any funding that might be required, we'll make sure that we present it to the board, or funding in addition to what we have set aside, we'll present it to the board for a potential special town meeting article.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I mean, this discussion tonight is basically focused on well four. I mean, I have some concerns on well five, which we'll deal with, I guess, at a future meeting. Just out of curiosity, if we get things going on well four, and I really don't have a problem with supporting this tonight, are we going to be running it? I guess, question one is, how many hours a day do you expect to run it? And are we going to run it every day once we get the green light?
So, the plan was to run it periodically based on the demand needed. With the season winding down, usually around this time, we start to drop down in flows. After Columbus Day, we drop down a lot more. So, right now, the plan would probably be to just use it on our big, heavy days, which are usually Monday, Wednesday, Friday. That's when we have troubles with the storage tanks are dropping down because of the irrigation use. But as irrigation systems start getting shut off the next couple of weeks, next month or two, that won't be as much of a demand. So, right now, for September, I'm thinking we probably use it maybe four or five hours on those high-demand days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And then, if well eight does get above that 20 parts per trillion, we're going to shut that well down, and we'll need to use it to compensate for that. But at that point, again, the flow should be lower. South Chatham wells and the Morton Road well should be able to handle the bulk of the flow after Columbus Day. And then, we would just use the well, as I mentioned, for maintenance if we wanted to shut down the South Chatham well to change out all the chem feed lines or same thing over at the water treatment plant. We would just use it to compensate for that. And that's usually a two- to three-day project for our guys to go in there and change out all those lines and get it back up and running. So, it wouldn't be used for the 13, 14 hours a day, seven days a week, like everything else is.
No, that's good to hear. It'll give us some relief for the other wells, but not max out our capability. So, that's good. Thank you.
Shereen?
Thank you for the report. And I'm fully supportive of the contingency activation motion, if anybody's going to make that down the road. But at this point, you know, reading the report and seeing the lower levels and the alarms going off, whatnot, not to alarm people because, obviously, you know, we have a plan here. Is there, do you see a need for extra conservation measures when it comes to usage going forward? I mean, I know it's, I know we're going into the fall now, so you did indicate that the use was, might be less for this month.
Yeah, so the use will definitely go down after everyone starts to shut their irrigations off. I just had a meeting the other day with the Harwich, Dan Pelletier, Paul Obrin Brewster, Sue from Orleans, and Dave from Dennis, all the other water department heads. And we were talking about the water levels that Dr. Bob showed you earlier from those USGS wells and how they're not climbing. So, if we don't get a substantial amount of rain and snow this winter, then we're going to be starting basically in the hole and coming out of the gates asking for the restrictions to be just as strict, if not maybe a little bit stricter, as far as, right now, we have our odd even. Some of the other towns are talking about maybe just doing a two-day-a-week watering. So, I know that's asking a lot, but I think if we could stick with what we've been doing, doing our odd even, policing it as much as we can, and just keeping it at that level, then hopefully, we'll get some rain and snow to come up.
Thank you. I just want the board to just keep that in mind as we go forward, you know, with this and, you know, for next year.
Thank you. Shereen, Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a follow-up question. I guess probably this goes to Bob, but maybe to Tom. Do you have a rough estimate of what the percentage drop would be in terms of pumpage if there were no town water, private irrigation systems in town? Is that a clear question or clear enough question? If we took all, if there were no, if nobody was using town water on their private irrigation systems, do we know how much we would save?
I don't have that number, and I'm not sure anybody does, because we still don't have an absolute good accounting of all the irrigation systems that are tied into the town, you know, municipal water system. We've been trying to get that. I know the DPW staff has been reaching out to a lot of people, reaching out to the various companies and service them. You know, some have been more forthcoming with all their customers than others. So, yeah, we don't have an absolute count of how many irrigation systems are tied into this town system to be able to, like, generate that kind of a number at this point. I mean, Tom, you may have a better sense, but I know that's been kind of one of our missing links, if you will, for a number of years.
Yeah, like you said, we're definitely collecting a lot more data on who is actually registered as far as irrigation system and who isn't. We could pull together some kind of numbers from that with just the registered residents that have the irrigation, but then that's not counting all the people that aren't registered. So, there'd still be a lot out there. But we could get a number, per se, so I can talk to Pam Jones about that tomorrow and see if we can kind of compile some information on the registered irrigation usage.
It would be interesting to know that. As of January 1 of this year, no one can tie into, tie an irrigation system into the municipal water supply, right? They have to have a private well.
Right.
And anybody who has a pre-existing system is supposed to have it separately metered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Dean.
I will offer a motion. When you're ready, I'll offer a motion. I know you're going to have public comment.
Yeah, I just have one comment, one question for him, just a simple one. I, too, support, you know, the activation proposal that was put here. I just wonder, you said most of the work is done. Have any idea of the timing that we're talking about? I know you can't control DEP, but as far as our work, that's pretty, that's just about done. And then, what is normal for DEP approval?
Yeah, so, I would say they're probably about a week and a half, two weeks out of getting everything up and running so that we can perform all the testing that DEP will require. And that's basically some chem feed testing, making sure our dosage is right, making sure our alarms will shut the wells off when it's supposed to, when it hits a high chlorine level or a high pH level. So, once we have everything up and running, we'll be able to do our testing within a day or two, get that information to DEP. And the last time I was speaking with Jim over at DEP, he said he would want to try to fast-track this for us as quickly as he could. So, once we get him the information, I'm thinking we should probably have an answer from him within a week.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Any public comment?
Two weeks out.
I don't see any hands. Do you have any?
There's one hand.
There is?
Ms. Gibbs.
Okay. Elaine, okay, Elaine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My questions, I've got two separate ones, but one is on well four and five. Well four had PFOS in April at about 12, and well five has currently been at 6.73. But I remember conversations we had a couple of weeks ago where you did have some concerns that those might not be accurate numbers because the way they're tested, they're not actually pumping, so they're not drawing from a wider part of the aquifer. So, I guess my question is, is there any way, because I asked Tom Temple, and he said if DEP could approve it, is there any way to actually pump those without, you know, putting the water back in the system to see what the real PFOS numbers are? Because I guess one of the concerns are, if we do get well five up and start actually pumping it, that it may show the same increases as well eight. And then, the question is, can we blend them? Or what's the backup plan? And if well four also shows increases, what do we do then? So, is there a way to test them now before, you know, they're actually all up and running?
Yeah, so currently, when we sample well five, since we're not putting it into the distribution system, we isolate it from the distribution system and use a fire hydrant to flow it out. So, we run that for a couple of hours before we take our sample. But with the influence like Dr. Bob was talking about earlier with well eight pumping for as long as it has, if we did start pumping well five for longer times, there is a chance that those numbers could go up. What we'll probably end up doing, once we get the approval to get five and eight going with treatment and everything, is we'll probably perform another prolonged pumping test, meaning we'll isolate the two wells from that distribution system, pump it to waste for several days. A prolonged pump test, usually about a 12 to 14-day pumping at the rate that you're normally pumping at. So, probably about 13 to 15 hours a day for about 12 days, take a bunch of samples throughout those days to kind of see what the levels are if they're, if they are rising. And what we would do is then collect that data, give them to the firm that is running the study, and then they would help Weston and Sampson when they design the actual treatment of what we would need to remove the PFOS. So, we would perform a prolonged pump test would be the answer.
Okay. And can you do a prolonged pump test on well four ahead of time?
So, we did, yeah, we did do a prolonged pump test right before we started the rehabilitation of it, and our numbers were much lower. If you look at the well four chart, the last samples that we got from there came back as non-detect. But again, we're not using that pump a lot, but we did run the prolonged pump test for about 12 days over there. Took a bunch of different samples from there to make sure that everything was in accordance with the DEP MCLs, and everything was looking good there. So, yeah, we could definitely pump that well for another prolonged pump test over there to make sure that our results are staying. But with that one, since it did show up at over 10 parts per trillion at one point, we will be sampling that well when it is online monthly. That's a requirement from DEP. If it's above 10, that you sample monthly from there. So, we'll have monthly samples from that well, which will let us know if we're starting to see any kind of increase.
Okay. And my only other question, I think most of them for well 10, 11 will come later. But again, it seems like there are no testing has been done since 2017. You did mention that there is a need for iron and manganese. So, do we know for sure those wells have iron and manganese that will require a plant? And do we know if they have any PFOS from any kind of testing?
Yeah, so, we don't know about the PFOS because, as Dr. Bob mentioned, there's no, there was no pumps in there, and we weren't testing for PFOS back in 2010 and 2017 when they did those prolonged pump tests. But with those wells, they are in that same area of the Morton Road Treatment Plant and South Chatham. They're closer in proximity to those wells. So, therefore, we're hopeful that it's not on that side of town, the PFOS. Iron and manganese, the iron and manganese levels are on the increase all throughout town, unfortunately. So, maybe right out of the gate, you won't need the iron and manganese treatment, but definitely down the road. And that's while, when we design it, we'll design it to be ready for the expansion of iron and manganese removal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I want to offer a motion that the select board authorize activation of well four contingent upon written approval from Mass DEP, establishment of activation requirements by Mass DEP, and the Water Division completing all necessary startup and testing protocols.
Second? Second. Any discussion? Let's go for a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much, Tom and Dr. Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is a public hearing on tax classification. Corey?
Public comments.
Please forget that. You're gonna, you're gonna get my vote. All right, first, public comments on those business item, agenda items excluding now considering a date for calling a special town meeting and warrant articles. Do I have any, any public comments?
You have one hand raised by Ms. Gibbs.
Okay, before, anyone from the board? Nope? Okay. Okay, Elaine, go ahead. Excuse me. Elaine, was your hand still up from before, or is this something new? I guess we'll carry on.
Mr. Levitt's hands up.
Okay, Mr. Levitt.
Mr. Myers.
No, it's, okay, it's George Myers. Okay. George? We having a technical problem?
No, I think they want to speak on the special town meeting warrant articles.
I know, I know George does, at least I think he does, but his hand's up.
I have a member.
Yeah, we're having a problem. Go ahead, come up to the microphone. No, you have to go to the microphone.
Is this the point where?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Tax policy?
Yeah, but you have to, just think you know.
Not yet.
Did you hear what, I didn't hear what he said.
Tax policy.
Oh, no, not yet. I'll remember though.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. George Myers speaking. Upon reviewing the proposed special town meeting warrant tentatively planned for next month.
Hey, George, George, excuse me.
Yes.
You're going to speak on the special town meeting warrant and the adding any warrant articles for the special town meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, you can wait till add agenda item to speak. You don't have to do it now. That was changed at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll wait.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Elaine, are you still there? I see your hands up.
I see them.
Okay, well, that's not, well, let's continue. As I was saying, let's start with the tax classification hearing. And Corey, would you read the notice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Public notice. In accordance with the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Town of Chatham Select Board will hold a fiscal year 2022 property tax classification hearing. Said hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, September 7, 2021, at 5:30 PM at the Select Board's meeting, Large Meeting Room 261 George Rider Road. Please, please see the link in the posted agenda to participate remotely through Microsoft Teams. The meeting will also be broadcast live on Channel 18. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider the percentages of the FY 2022 tax levy to borne by each class of taxable real and personal property. All persons interested in the determination may participate and be heard at that, at the time and place stated above, per order of the Chatham Select Board.
Thank you, Corey. Just so everyone knows, what we'll do next is we'll probably hear from Alex, we'll have, and maybe Del from the, from the audit, auditors, not auditors, but the assessors.
Assessors, yes.
And then, and then we'll have comments by the board, and then I'll open it up to the public, okay? All right, so, welcome, Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, good evening, Board and people, public, members of the public. Tonight, we have our annual tax classification hearing, which occurs every year before we submit the tax recap sheet to the Department of Revenue. In your package tonight, we've outlined the four items that the board must vote on. The four options for the tax classification hearing are the residential factor, the open space discount, whether or not to grant a residential exemption, and the small business exemption. Again, we have this tax classification hearing now in September in advance of issuing bills on our issuing bills on October 1st, which meets the statutory requirement um, to get bills paid by November 1st. Um, in your packet, we have outlined um, in fairly good detail, um, all the different options for the classification hearing. Um, for the open space discount, there's no land in Chatham that currently um, is classified as open space, so that is sort of a non-starter for tonight. Um, the residential exemption, we've had discussions on that in previous years. And as you might recall, um, at the annual town meeting, there was a petition article regarding the residential exemption, um, whether the town, whether the board should vote to adopt such, and that um, was defeated at town meeting with 46 in favor and 76 opposed. Um, the small commercial exemption is another option which you have, which would um, shift some of the um, taxes to this, the commercial. And again, um, that would shift the tax burden within the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes from small, commercial, and um, the Board of Assessors has not recommended that, as well as the other items, which I'll talk to in a minute. So again, we do have the Board of Assessors with us and um, our Dell Kell, Kelly Dale, our Director of Assessing is with us. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but a couple of things I just wanted to say is the Board of Assessors did meet to vote on all these um, items, the four different classifications, on August 11th. And they um, voted not to recommend um, the open space discount, not to grant a residential exemption, and not to grant a small business exemption, and to classify the tax rate with the residential factor of one, so each class maintains 100% of the full um, value of the tax share and doesn't shift the tax burden um, from one classification to another. And I'm happy to answer any particular questions you might have on any of these, or um, defer to Dale um, for more information.
Uh, any from the board? Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Alex, a couple of questions, um, having read the material that you and Dale provided. Um, it's, it's a correct statement, is it not, that there is a break even point? Uh, and this has to do with the residential tax exemption. There's a break even point, it's 2.3 million, I think, according to the current.
That's correct.
Classifications. So um, a cha- a Chatham year-round resident, a Chatham resident who has a house that's valued at that, will be negatively impacted, will pay a higher tax than they, than they otherwise would if this were adopted. So it doesn't just affect seasonal taxpayers. That's a correct statement?
That is correct, that's a correct statement. Um, if your house is valued at over that break even point, um, because what happens with the residential exemption, um, is that taxpayers who qualify for the residential exemption, um, receive an exemption similar to an abatement on their value. Um, in order to make up that difference within the residential class, the tax rate for everyone for the residential um, class uh, is increased. Um, we're estimating a class, a tax rate of $4.62, I believe. Um, and it would go up to, um, with the residential exemption, I think we said it would go up over um, $5. So then, if you do not qualify for that resident, residential exemption, either because you are above the break even point, or if you own more than one property in Chatham, it's only your residential property where you um, are domiciled that receives that exemption. So any other property you had would be taxed at that higher rate.
A second question, um, I found this in the material, it's, it's a correct statement that if the residential tax exemption were adopted, that 56% of the taxpayers, or 56% of the, of the tax obligation in this town would not be eligible for that exemption? A majority of tax money or a majority of taxpayers are not going to be eligible for the exemption. Um, not, whether they live in Chatham year-round or not? Is that, that's a correct statement? Because I, I was trying to find.
Uh, yeah, the amount of non-residents or seasonal residents um, has changed. It used to be about 63% previously, we're now down to about 55%. So we're fairly even between the number of um, full-time residents and uh, seasonal or part-time residents.
But it's still a majority, there's, a majority of taxpayers in the Town of Chatham will not benefit from this tax exemption. That's a correct statement? If they're 56, 56%?
Yes, I'd have to just review that for a second.
56% from what I saw in your materials?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, you list the various towns that have been, um, have implemented this on the Cape, in particular, I think it's Truro, Wellfleet, Provincetown, and Barnstable. In terms of the more recent ones to have adopted this, I think that's Truro. Do we have any um, uh, empirical information on whether it's benefited um, uh, the town in terms of um, attracting or keeping younger demographics in the town? Have, has anybody put that information forward? It's been in place a couple of years now in these towns, far as I know.
Uh, it has been in place. Um, I have not heard, I um, defer to Dale on that, if she's heard anything from um, the assessing uh, departments. Dale?
Hi, um, no, I have not heard anything um, from the assessing departments yet. I believe the last statement I did hear on that, it was too early to formulate an opinion.
Okay. My last question goes to, or comment goes to the subject of trusts. According to the information you've provided, there are 612 properties in the Town of Chatham uh, that are own, in the ownership of a trust. Um, and there is included a July 1991 Department of Revenue or Division of Local Services um, guideline about who qualifies, which, which trusts qualify. And there are some specifics there, in particular, they say that you have to have, uh, the same person has to have both a legal interest and a beneficial interest. Um, I guess I would point out that not all trusts are drawn the same, even though the net result may be that the individual, the same individual is, is a trustee and has a ben, has the beneficial interest. So in order to um, qualify, the property owner is going to have to present their trust information to, to the Department of Assessing for evaluation. And I'll quote from the um, from the guideline, it says, uh, "Since trust instruments are often complex legal documents, assessors should, when necessary, seek the assistance of their municipal lawyer when construing them and when applying these guidelines." So I would submit that there would be some illegal expense on the town. In addition to any legal expense that might be on the taxpayer, who if he wants, if he or she wants to qualify, if the trust is not drawn according to these particulars. I don't know if they've spent any updates since July 1991, I suspect not, or Dale would have put it in the packet. So uh, those are my comments and questions. I, I appreciate the um, the information, very detailed information you've provided to the board on this, and I appreciate the, the work of the, the Board of Assessors. I serve as liaison to the Board of Assessors and um, um, I, I know they've put a lot into this, so um, I'm certainly listening to what they have to say and I'll listen to what the public has to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Dean. Before I move on, I, there's two comments I was gonna make at the end, but I'll make part of it now, that had to deal with what Dean said. Just on the last point on trust, you know, if, not familiar with the trust, obviously, it's for estate planning, doesn't necessarily mean you're a trust baby, as, as some people put it, you know, I mean, it's, it's estate planning that, that's used by people of all income levels. The second point is um, the um, you go back and look at, at the way this, 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 the residential tax assessment was started, I went back a number of times in the discussions of what was said, and also I think it's within the assessors uh, uh, either handbook or one of the recommendations they made. This, this residential tax assessment is commonly used by large cities and towns, townships, where they have a large apartments and whatever. You could think of that as lots of, lots of commercial, lots of second homeowners, and then you have a small number. That number is usually something over 75% or 75% of, 70 to 75% of the ho, of the resident, excuse me, of the homeowners, if they're a part-time residence, then it's, it's, it's appropriate to use this. We are at 56%. Truro was at 75%. Provincetown is at 80%. So even if you find out if it's helped them a little bit, there's still a need for them to do this. They have a, they have a good reason to do it, and also Martha Vineyard, I think, is up around, around 80%. So that's, I'll leave it at that. Uh, let's see, Shereen, go ahead.
Um, so, we know that um, the 365 Committee had brought this up as a, as a recommendation um, back, but there wasn't any deep dive into it, and I think consequently, we've seen this deep dive happening, what some of the complications are to doing um, this. And the other piece is that, the matter of timing that we see is a particular problem for the town, um, with, you know, with a, a tax bill delay, if it's to happen, and then, you know, potential cash flow issues. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that it, this is not a good time to even be addressing this, even though this is the time that we always, always do this. But to make any changes like this, I don't think it would be the best timing um, at, at this, at this juncture.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and uh, I would agree with the, with Shereen. Um, I have a couple of comments, a couple of questions as well. Um, this is the eighth time, well, excuse me, the ninth time I've considered this uh, tax classification issue and um, and eight times I voted to not have a residential exemption. And I do feel as if we wanted to make structural and, and mechanical and structural, I should say, change to this, it's something we should have addressed, I think, months prior to this moment. Um, with, there's not enough time to, to float um, a, a reasonable alternative, and I don't know, and I'm asking, I'm gonna ask Alex what those might or might not be able to be as a municipality, because I'm not totally informed. But I think it's too late in the game to, 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 to change, to, uh, to adopt a residential exemption, and frankly, probably don't have the votes either. However, that being said, there is, there are some very well um, formulated arguments in favor of relief for our year-round residents who have homes that, you know, aren't necessarily assessed a ton, but still have difficulty paying the freight for even at 462 or 498 or five bucks. So I'm interested in knowing if there's any, any other way, any other mechanism. I, I understand these four classifications are by statute, by, by the state's tax code. Is that a fair statement, Alex? We can't, can't kind of mess with, these are the classifications that our assessors and our municipality has to deal with. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we can't really, we can't, we can't add a classification. However, do we have the opportunity as a municipality to come up with a different mechanism where we give relief as a municipality to those folks with an assessment, you know, south of, you know, half the overall average sales price? I'm making it up as I talk, but an assessment that's, that's less and, and give them a certain um, percent abatement, if you will, a relief, I should say, on that assessment. So that assessed value may be $500,000, but we're willing to give a 10% relief to that, so their actual assessment becomes 450,000. So on a tax of 462, $4.62, a relief of 550 grand, I should say, the difference between 50 and 450 assessed value would be about 231 bucks. And then if we went to 20%, it would be, you know, 400 and something dollars. I'm looking for a mechanism whereby we come up with a method to provide some relief to our year-round residents who have difficulty paying their tax bill, who are not enjoying perhaps the, the ramp up in, in, in value and um, the other side of the, of this coin. Because there are folks in this town that struggle to pay their tax bill, that are almost 100% by definition year-round residents. And I think it behooves us to at least examine mechanisms other than a tax classification to provide them relief. That's my first point. My second question, I guess, is do we entertain abatements for folks that come to us believing their assessment's too high? And what are the percentages of year-round versus non-year-round residents where we listen closely and provide those abatements? I'd be interested in that data as well. But I, I'm just trying to pick brains here, kind of speaking out loud, but asking you in particular, if there are other municipalities, I know other states go about this differently, and I think it would behoove us to do some research, I have not, but I would like to do some research on how other states, such as Florida, I'm told, deal with year, deal with year, year-round residents versus non-residents. So, so I, I open it up for a comment and question and, and perhaps a response. Thank you, Alex, thanks for listening. I, I do think it's late in the game to mess around with this, it's too late in the game, but.
Um, if I might, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, um, we do have an, I, I see Dale has come on as well, because um, she can provide more detail on the types of abatements and exemptions that are available to taxpayers, um, such as veterans, um, exemptions, et cetera. Um, however, there are some mechanisms that the town has adopted, and one is through the um, Community Preservation Act, um, for um, helping people stay in their homes with home improvements if their income qualified, and that's through the um, HESH Health Program, um, which is, um, again, um, you can reach out to HESH for, um, if you are income qualified for, and assist to make repairs, say, to your roof or something, so you can stay in your home, and that is for in, income qualified um, residents. So that's one mechanism the town has adopted. I don't know if there's other um, options out there, and I'll turn it over to Dale if she knows of anything.
Go ahead, Dale.
I am not, hi, I am not aware of any certain programs, um, as far as residency besides, year-round resident, besides this one in Massachusetts at this moment. At least it hasn't been brought up to the assessing community. There are different towns that adopt um, a more on an income base than a year-round status base. Um, there are different senior means, different programs that are now coming to light, but that is through a home rule petition. But based strictly on your residency, this is the only exemption I am aware of for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have a, anyone else?
I was looking up something.
All right, let me, let me get a, just a, Alex, uh, the uh, part-time residents pay a personal property tax. How much, how much did they pay in the last year, the year before, or whatever? I, 2019 may be skewed, but I think you have a number.
Yeah, in um, this past year for 2021, um, personal property collected, uh, for the Town of Chatham was over $322,000. And again, that is um, for second homes, um, if you're, if it's not a full-time residence. Um, so again, it's 322,000 plus, um, was collected for FY 2021 personal property tax.
Okay, thank you. And, and here's, I, I agree with, in a way with, with Jeff, we have to find other means. In my opinion, there, there are people that are hurting, and we have to find the means to do that. My problem is, this doesn't help all the young folks, and it doesn't help the people that are renting. As a matter of fact, it's probably worse for the renter, because they're gonna rent from people that have second homes or second properties. And if we hit them with a large tax, it's gonna be put right at renter. We already have a terrible problem there. It is a tough problem. And, and, and if you look at, our tax rate last year was 400, $4.98. Now it's down 7% to 4.6.2, 6, 4.62. We increased our property values by 10%. I'm not saying it's a balance, but it's pretty close. Your tax rate has gone down, you've got an increase in your property, you're close to what you were paying before. Doesn't help the person that really needs it. So we have to find ways to do that. And I, and I agree, we, we need to do that. There are all kinds of other exemptions that are around, it doesn't help everybody. I mean, there's things like, you know, veterans, and there's qualified property owners that, you know, seniors and so forth. But with our property values continuing to increase, um, that affordable home of 500 or 600,000 dollars is gonna disappear very, pretty quickly. And uh, we just have, we have to address it, but rejiggering the whole tax rate, generally I have a problem, because we can't figure out what the un, what, what are the, the consequences that we don't even know about? So anyway, go ahead, Corey.
No, I was gonna just make one simple comment. I mean, the concept of a residential tax exemption, something that's been kicked around for a couple of years now, so it's nothing new. Um, unfortunately, a lot of the details have deterred us from moving forward because of certain mechanical elements that just don't seem to make it want to work, either, you know, administratively or, you know, functionally for the, for our, for our taxpayers. So, but I do think the general philosophy of what we're trying to gain by maybe but I do think the general philosophy of what we're trying to gain by maybe going down that path is something we shouldn't abandon. We should look at other concepts or mechanics that might lead us into the direction where we want to go for that goal. But clearly for tonight, I don't think any, changing any of the classifications makes any sense. I mean, we should stay forward with what we have on the plate, but not give up that philosophical goal that we're looking for. And it may be a different path, and maybe other ideas and other communities may have something out there for us. But I don't want to abandon that general concept of helping our residents, you know, as best as we can. So, thank you.
Thank, I, I cut Dale off. Shereen, do you have anything first?
I had something I thought I could share from another town, but.
Okay. Dale, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Nope, I was all set. I, I wasn't saying anything. But thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from board? Jeff?
So, i- if we really are, are going to kind of pursue the issue, I guess we need to have a future agenda item as well.
That's correct. Yeah.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I will support the, you know, the, the dollar and no, no change for this evening.
Okay, any, any public comment?
Please.
May I please, the board, Mr. Nolan, in a shabby place. In view of the evident sense of the board, any further comment here may be odious. I do not, you know, know whether you might wish to, you know, hear remarks that go to someone more to the substance than to certain questions of administrative convenience of timing, or whether you just, you know, wish to go ahead and give your vote.
Well, if you have anything to offer, be more than happy to hear.
Well, very, well, I do then. And if I may, I'm primordially, of course, I condemn this scheme on constitutional principle, though it somehow survived in the Statute Book of the Commonwealth. And I shall not rehearse my, sorry, is this not working? Just turn it on. Ah, I beg your pardon. Primordially, of course, I condemn this scheme on constitutional principle, though it somehow survived in the Statute Book of the Commonwealth. I shall not rehearse my own argument from town meeting beyond repeating that this discrimination would sunder whatever tenuous community of interest there may be between residents and non-residents who already on a level field bear the major onus of funding the town's year-round expenditure, including in first place the unused schools, while often paying specific user fees for such services and permits as they require. And let us not forget that these same people are already, in parallel, paying, you know, their, you know, full share of the levy in the, in their domiciles. But I should like instead this evening to turn to two sets of observations, one on non-residents and the, and the second among residents. In moving his proposal at town meeting, Mr. Taylor strongly insinuated that the typical situation is an absentee owner profiting mightily from a turnstile of short-term rentals. This may in fact be a growing phenomenon. But for what it is worth, anecdotally, that has not been the case of the friends and acquaintances of my family over a span of now nigh on sixty years. Rather, their second homes have been just that, second homes, lodging children and now grandchildren, and all the friends of all of those generations for a summer of sand and seed. And to the extent that people do make short-term rentals, a practice hardly unknown amongst residents either, those bear three special taxes totaling two and a half times the base rate of the state income tax, which presumably is payable also, in addition to the cost of increased mandatory insurance, registration, and inspection. Then the workings of this exemption also create nasty divisions within the residential community, setting middling owner-occupiers over against, as you noted, Mr. Kokolas, renters on the one hand, and on the other hand, those who for one reason or another find themselves among the break-even point. It is odd that the Finance and Assessment Director's report alludes to the matter of resident renters only most glancingly, although, you know, to be fair, the Summer Residents Report, you know, gives it a fuller treatment. Now, one may suppose that people starting out in life will begin by renting, yet the ineligibility of year-round, you know, rental properties for the exemption, and their consequent burden of an increased mill rate will mechanically feed through into hiked rent. If the object town policies to attract young people and families, this mechanism is a very strange way to go about it. And retirees holding appreciated properties, quite likely from long family tenure, whether already settled here or aiming to establish residence, are in a similar case to non-residents, making little call on town and regional services. Now, one need not dwell at length on the further issue of trusts and the ineligibility of a more recent alternative thereto, LLCs, as these are treated in the Town Administration's report and have been, you know, discussed, you know, by the board this evening. But one may note that one of the appeals of trust has always been their confidentiality, whereas under this scheme, they would have to be filed with town government and then laboriously reviewed each year, as has been noted in the report. Numbers would have to be torn apart and redrafted, where that's even possible, to satisfy the conditions. And again, anecdotally, I know of a family which, trying to keep the property going upon an inheritance, thinks it can only sort out its affairs through an LLC, you know, flatly excluded from the exemption, of course. Now, given that the town authorities, in the Finance and Assessors' report, you know, quite plainly rule out any of the other categories of differential tax rates, it would be most blatant and hostile to adopt this one alone. I mean, to conclude by returning to the core case of seasonal homeowners, I heard unprompted from one normally gentle and generous man, that try as he might, he could not prevent himself from resenting the discrimination to the degree that he would be much less disposed to donate to all the local good causes he's been supporting up to now. Is this a spirit one wishes to foster? Now, this provision is invidious, it is unjust, and it is unworthy, and I pray that you dismiss it once again, as you have before. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Would you give your name, please? I didn't ask you to do that.
Frederick Nolan.
Thank you. I see I have a hand up from Michael Waters. Michael, welcome.
Thank you very much. I am speaking on behalf of the Summer Residence Advisory Committee. We had a meeting and discussed this, adopted a position, and we have submitted our position paper to the board. And I referred you to that for more detail in why we think a residential tax exemption is a bad idea for everybody in Chatham. Suffice it to say, for this moment, our position is that we support the unanimous recommendation of all the assessors, together with the recommendation of the staff and the vote at the town meeting, that you not take any action to implement a residential tax exemption. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Any other public comment? I don't see any more hands. Any, bring it back to the board, anything? Any other comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Dean?
I want to offer the following motion, that the select board move, that the select board, I offer the following motion, that the town of Chatham continue to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of "one" in quotes, and to reject the residential exemption and the small commercial exemption. And "two," that the select board authorize use of the signature stamp for tax rate forms and authorize the Finance Director to sign for the select board electronically all forms necessary.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Starting with none. Jeff?
No.
Okay.
Aye.
Take a vote.
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for their comments and the hard work that was put into this. We're now moving into our business agenda by board discussion items. First one is proclamation September as suicide prevention. And we have any comments by anyone? Present it, or I'll just have Corey read it.
Guess what's the updated information. Thank you.
All right. National Suicide Prevention Month proclamation, 2021, Town of Chatham. Whereas, September is known as Suicide Prevention Month, a time in which mental health advocates, individuals, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and communities around the country unite to promote suicide prevention awareness. And whereas, the past year was presented, has presented our communities with challenges and led to transitions that expected or unexpected, welcome or not, can be unsettling, disorientating, and stressful. And whereas, the pandemic has changed our fabric of life and major life changes our environment, mental risk factors for suicide. And whereas, we know that connecting, working with, and supporting one another can help prepare us for the future. And whereas, according to the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention, the AFSP, suicide is the tenth-leading cause of death among adults and the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of ten and thirty-four in the United States. And whereas, more than forty-eight thousand people die by suicide across the United States in two thousand, two thousand nineteen, with an average of one hundred thirty-two suicides completed daily. And whereas, each suicide directly impacts a minimum of one hundred additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas, local organizations like the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health and education, and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others, including taking care of mental health. And whereas, Chatham publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement. Whereas, all Chatham residents urge to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards reducing suicides. And whereas, September is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Month and provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs for suicide and how to reach out and connect to those experiencing an emotional crisis. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I, or you, Peter K. Kokolas, Select Board Chair, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 a National Suicide Prevention Month in the town of Chatham.
Thank you, Corey. And just make the point that we do this annually. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I, I want to offer an amendment to the motion, because I think typically when we've had proclamations, it's been the full board rather than the chair.
I have no problem.
Your czarship. So I would say that instead of I, Peter Kokolas, Select Board Chair, would say that we, the Select Board of the Town of Chatham, do hereby proclaim.
Okay. Shereen?
So I'll make the motion then, if that's okay, because suicide is a public health issue, and prevention is key. Public awareness is all. Suicide is a, thank you, is a public health issue in our community, and it is preventable, and awareness is key. So I move to proclaim September 2021 as Suicide Prevention Month in Chatham.
In a second.
Second. Any discussion? We are, okay. Let's take it to a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you. Next is a request for temporary closure of an establishment holding an annual liquor license. And I noticed that Terry Mitchell is on. Would you like to comment, Terry?
Hi, I, I wrote a letter that says that we, as an organization, need some time to take a step back, to refocus, to try to understand the limitations that have been just impacted us so much. The fact that people don't want to sit side by side anymore, the fact that the supply chain's interrupted, the fact that the employment is, we can't get our J-1 students. There are so many things that have impacted us over the last eighteen months, where our small family run operation that needs a man to just step outside the box while we still have some retained earnings, and figure out what to do to best serve this community, and to, to, you know, maintain a profit in, in this really challenging time.
Terry, I, yeah, I, I think we got it. There's, there's a background or music or something that was there. But.
I'm sorry?
No, we were, we had a tough time hearing you, because it sounds like there's something in the background.
I'm at the restaurant, so we're operating right now. So you're probably hearing the background noise at the restaurant.
Okay. I, I got most of it. Anybody in the board have a problem, a question?
Terry?
Yeah. Maybe you ought to mute your mic for, for a bit. Terry?
Terry, can you mute your mic for a second?
Yeah, there she goes. Okay. Good. Shereen?
Yeah, so there, you know, obviously COVID was a really challenging month, a year for everybody. And, and I'm, I'm really proud of the community, you know, sticking in there, our restaurants and businesses. And I know that we had a waiver on the specific regulation that speaks to, except for emergencies, all requests for closings for more than two weeks shall be submitted before November thirtieth, and requests for temporary closings should be in writing, and, and the reason for the length. I'm not sure that we've had one that has asked to be closed for, for a considerable amount of time like this. But, you know, I, I think that in, I'm not sure what kind of ramifications closing would have with the state. I don't know if Shawna's on, if, whether she can speak to the risk that may be involved in doing this, or whether we, as a board, can say, yes, we'll go ahead and approve this for this particular time, for these particular reasons, whether that's going to be satisfactory to the A, B, C, C board. Shawna, is there any, because I know that this isn't the only business in town that's having a challenge like this. Shawna?
Hi, yes. Because of the way the regulations are written in town for the local regulations, it is appropriate for the board to approve a temporary closure. You've done it previously for some annual licensees that close for maybe a month or so in February or March. The state would not pursue any action, calling this a pocket license, if you will, unless the town took action with the licensee.
I have another question for you. Yes, thank you. Shawna, is this one of the licenses that are geographic to, to, to the particular section of town?
This one is not, no.
Okay, all right. And this is a year-round license?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Year-round all alcohol.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm very supportive of trying to support our local businesses and keep, keep them going. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this closure.
Jeff and Corey, but I'll make a comment first. The way it's written, this has to come back to us in December.
Okay.
When I, I, that's, that was important, well, relatively important to me. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Terry, I'm very supportive as well. I just had a question about the spring date. Is there any drop dead date when she needs to return in the spring to, to secure or keep the annual all liquor license, or, or not? And I'm very supportive, I'll do anything you need or want to do, in terms of, you know, supporting your, hopefully you'll keep the business going here. But I am interested if, if, if you don't want an annual all license, you know, all liquor license, then, then we'd have one available. So I just, I think we need to know that.
Shawna, sorry.
Shawna?
Yes, thank you. There, the renewal for annual licenses takes place in November, so there would be at that time a need for the owners of, of the Tocative Pig to actually take steps to renew the license if they plan to continue, or perhaps at that time they may have made a decision to pursue a different type or, or something. So there would be an update to the board in December. If they choose to renew the annual, I would suggest most seasonal licenses start operating in April or May. That would be an appropriate restart time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Corey? Thank you. Corey?
Um, thank, maybe Shawna can answer this, but I, I'm, I want to be supportive, but I also have a little bit of pause concern. Because this type of closure is not something I remember the board ever acting on for this length of time. And the question is, if we, if we were to grant a extended closure on a year-round license, and if there's another entity out there who is pursuing another piece of property and wanted a license, are we putting ourselves in a very awkward position from the Alcohol Granting Authority, from the state? That's my first question to Shawna. And the second question is, between now and December, we're gonna get an update?
December.
What are we gaining exactly for not taking an action tonight? I just want to make sure I'm clear of, you know, not being too harsh tonight. Because they may make a decision to either go to a seasonal license possibly, if that business, if that makes better sense for their, for their business, which would make any decision tonight really irrelevant, or what are we gaining toward, what will happen in December? I guess I want clarification on that, please.
Shawna?
So in, in December, we would have, we would, the owners would have had the opportunity to evaluate whether or not they want to renew the current annual license as they held, as they hold it today, or if they perhaps don't want to renew that. So there would be that type of update at that time. If the board wishes, you could certainly maybe approve a closure through, I don't know, December 15th, and then reevaluate when we know the renewal status, maybe. That's a suggestion, if you're more comfortable with that.
What about the first question? If some other party were to come into town and said, oh, you know, I want to open up a business at any location that's available in town that's not a year-round license available, this license has a greater extension than we normally would, you know, traditionally, does that put us into a procedural query, or is that, are we covered with that one?
There, there would be no issues because the license is approved for a closure and is being held by someone, so it wouldn't be available to anyone else at this point.
Okay.
Uh, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shawna, the, there's a, are there any currently pending applicants for licenses, year-round licenses?
I know of two current seasonal licensees that are interested in applying for annual licenses.
Okay. If we were to adopt the motion as suggested, which is in, in the, in the material, not the one you just posited, which calls for, which approves a closing from October 9th until spring 2022, and, and then in November or December, the applicant were to inform us that they don't wish to renew, then this, this vote would be moot as of the non-renew, the date of the non-renewal. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
We allowed a license to continue for a period unused on Crowell Road, which is now the, the location of the restaurant, the branches, I guess it's called. Do you recall how long that, that went on?
That license was bought from a previous establishment, and it was held for a period of over six months before the board, I believe, encouraged the holder to either turn it in or transfer it to an occupant of that building.
Okay. So it's clear that, that the applicant here wants to begin a closure on October 9th. Let me just, if I could pose a question to Ms. Mitchell. You heard Shawna's suggestion earlier that the board might consider approving a closure from September 9th through, let's say, December 15th or whatever. Does that give you some alternative comfort so that you could come in on December 15th and say, either we're gonna not require and not renew a year-round, a full, a year, I'm sorry, an all-alcohol year-li, year-round license, and we're gonna go seasonal, or yes, we do intend to continue this as a year-round business, we'd like to have a year-round license, but we'd like to have the closure continue until the spring of 2022. Is that something you could live with?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's perfectly fine and acceptable. I expected at renewal time, there would be some discussion.
Yeah. So that, I, Mr. Chairman, I think that for the purposes of tonight, and I think we're all supportive, we want to, want to help our restaurants. It seems to me to make sense that we, instead of having spring 22 as the date at the present time, we, we put a, a date of, Shawna, did you say December 15?
Yeah.
That would be appropriate, yes.
Yeah. I would suggest that. Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Shereen.
Any other discussion? No? I have a motion to, and I, and I would agree with the December date.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the temporary closing of the Tocative Pig from October 9, 2021 until December 15, 2021, with an update to the board on the status of the operational plans for the license when the board considers annual license renewals in December.
Tagging. Second, any discussion? Okay, let's go for a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Good luck. Terry?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you all.
Okay. Next is Carol Ridley. Welcome back. Pleasant Bay Alliance.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening.
Carol Ridley, coordinator for the Pleasant Bay Alliance, and thank you for allowing me some time on your agenda this evening. I do have a few PowerPoint slides. If I might share my screen, if that's okay at this point?
Certainly.
Okay, great. All right. Does everyone see that first slide?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, terrific. So my purpose in visiting with you this evening is to provide you with an update on the status of efforts under the Pleasant Bay watershed permit. In your packet, you had a copy of the 2021 annual report, which was submitted in August. And along with that, I wanted to give you an update on some additional work we have been doing, funded by grants from the Southeast New England Program, which is, or SNEP, as it's commonly referred to as. And that is a program that is funded by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and administered through Restore America's Estuaries. And so I just want to note, before I launch in here, that the work that I'm going to be sharing with you this evening is really been managed through the Pleasant Bay Alliance's Watershed Work Group. And of course, Dr. Bob is a leader in that discussion, along with, with Jeff Gregg and your appointed steering committee members, Chuck Bartlett and DeeDee Holt. And so they, along with their counterparts from the other three Alliance communities, which are Harwich, Brewster, and Orleans, really, along with their technical consultants and representatives from DEP and the Cape Cod Commission, this group really has been overseeing the efforts under, you know, tracking progress with the watershed permit and the work that we've been doing with the Southeast New England Program grants. So I just want to acknowledge all of the hard work and expertise that goes into the information I'm going to be sharing with you this evening. Part of our objective as well is to, you know, in this process of sharing information with our member communities, we want to get some feedback, and this is going to help us shape our next round of work. We have an additional grant under the SNEP program for a little over $100,000 that will be used to support some additional modeling scenarios to support our individual member towns as they make decisions with their comprehensive nutrient management programs. So that's an ongoing discussion topic with our watershed work group. And, you know, certainly welcome any feedback that the board would like to provide this evening, and we'll continue to have this conversation with Dr. Bob and others. The Alliance has been focused for our, you know, two decades of our existence on this question of nutrient pollution in Pleasant Bay, working with our member communities. So we're really pleased to be able to come forward and share some recent progress under the watershed permit. So the permit, as you may recall, was issued by Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection back in 2018. Each of our member towns received the permit, or was issued the permit by Mass DEP. It was the first in the Commonwealth. It's a 20-year renewable permit, and it's structured in five-year increments. And the purpose for that is to provide five-year check-in points, because these are, these are, it's a large watershed. The towns' individual plans are complex. And so by structuring this in five-year increments, it allows a chance to check in, see if progress is meeting expectations or exceeding expectations, or falling short in some ways, and what adjustments need to be made along the way. And there are significant benefits to this permit. First, it provides a very clear articulated process for towns to achieve nitrogen reduction credits and actually get credited by Mass DEP for all the work being undertaken. And this includes non-traditional technologies, which previously did not have a pathway for obtaining nitrogen reduction credits. Not so much of an issue here in Chatham, but certainly is a significant issue for some of our other member communities. There's also the benefit of Mass DEP forbearing from any enforcement actions, 48 violations of water quality standards. While communities are operating in compliance with their watershed permit, there's priority for state revolving funds being a watershed permit holding community. And certainly, you know, important to know that the other communities that, you know, share watersheds are doing their part to meet the total maximum daily loads, because within the Pleasant Bay watershed, there are, I think, 16 or 19 separate total maximum daily load thresholds that need to be met, and more than, I think, about half of those are, are shared watersheds. So it's important that the communities know that each is, is doing their share. And one of the primary, you know, points that was established in the permit is to very clearly articulate what each community's responsibility is for removing nitrogen. And watershed-wide, that amount is 17,700 kilograms per year. That's the, the total amount that needs to be removed to meet the nitrogen removal thresholds that were established by Massachusetts DEP and EPA. And so each town has its share specified in the permit, and you can see that Chatham's share here is 4,100 kilograms per year, about 23% of that total. Now, these numbers, I just want to note a couple of things. First, they're based on the 2006 Massachusetts Estuaries Project Technical Report. So that information has since been updated, and I'm going to share some of that information with you, because that's some of the work that we've done with our SNEP grant. So these numbers may be a little, slightly outdated in that regard, in terms of watershed loads, information, water use information, et cetera. There are also numbers that apply sort of to each town's sort of whole chunk of the watershed. But within any of our communities, there are several watersheds or subwatersheds, you know, within each town. So there may be specific targets for each of those subwatersheds. So it's not just one number. It's really one number, and within that, there are several other targets that need to be met, and that's important to bear in mind. And we need to always be mindful of the fact that these numbers are based on existing load, or existing load at the time the 2006 MEP report was put together. And we need to be mindful of the fact that any new load would be, need to be removed at 100%. So we are very focused in our upcoming work on that question of build-out and ensuring that all of the town plans for addressing future build-out and nitrogen load from build-out will allow us to maintain compliance with those nitrogen reduction thresholds. The, the Targeted Watershed Management Plan, so that's what TWMP stands for, Targeted Watershed Management Plan, which is a plan, it was requirement of the watershed permit, and it was put together by the Wright Pierce, which is a consultant under contract with the Alliance. And Wright Pierce worked with all of the individual towns' technical consultants to gather the information from the respective plans in each town and pull it into a whole watershed plan. And within that, the permit specifies what amounts of reduction each town proposes. So these are, these are actually the proposals from each town to achieve their targets. Now, I've circled Chatham here, and you can see in the first five years of the, of the permit, 247 kilograms per year was proposed to be removed, and that's essentially your fertilizer reduction efforts. So that's what Chatham had proposed to do in years one through five, and then it's not until years 11 to 15 and 16 to 20 that we see some additional reductions proposed for Chatham, and those are sewer-ing, I think, first in Frost Fish and Ryder's Cove in years 11 to 15, and then Muddy Creek Sub watershed, and then additional sewer-ing thereafter. And so you might notice that, for example, Harwich, as you're well aware, is taking actions earlier in the 20-year permit timeline through their sewer-ing in East Harwich, and Orleans has some additional work they're doing with Lanny's Pond Shelffish Agriculture and some sewer-ing in the Meeting House Pond Sub watershed. Brewster's doing a lot of work with reductions at their Captain's Golf Course and looking at some other options as well. So the towns have really sort of paced this based on a number of different factors within their communities. They're already making changes. Each town, and even Chatham, has made some, some small adjustments, but each town is already making some adjustments to this schedule of removals. That is to be expected, and that is essentially what we, you know, why it's a good idea to structure this in five-year increments. You know, so it's totally understandable and consistent with the concept of adaptive management that those changes are being made. We just want to make sure that we are able to track them. And so this is a look at how we're doing in terms of the targets set for the, for the Targeted Watershed Management Plan as reported in the 2021 report. The yellow dotted line is just under 5,000 kilograms per year is the five-year target. And if you look at the middle bar, which is progress up through the end of August of this year, what was reported in the most recent annual report, we are at 3,566 kilograms per year. So that's very good progress. The shaving, the hatched area there, that includes sewer connections, well, it includes sewer installations in East Harwich and also in Chatham that are, were, you know, sort of installed, related to Harwich work. Even though those haven't been connected, DEP was willing to accept those as progress, you know, complete progress, even though wastewater isn't flowing through those pipes. So that was counted in this annual report. And then if you look to the right, 2023 is the end of the first five-year segment of the permit. And if all towns do everything they're proposing at this point, or as proposed in the Targeted Watershed Management Plan, I should say, there will be slightly more than the required five-year target met. Now that, there are already changes being made, so I just want to stress that. And some of the estimates, particularly for some of the non-traditional technologies, are not meeting the targets that were set forth in the Targeted Watershed Management Plan, so there are already adjustments being made. But, you know, the good news is that, that things are pretty much on track with what was set forth in the permit for the first five years. Now, most of what I've just shared with you, as I mentioned, is based on the 20, excuse me, the 2006 Massachusetts Estuaries Project Report. One of the major projects that we undertook as part of our SNEP funding is to update that MEP model. So we now have a, an updated MEP-linked model. And I want to share a little bit of that information with you in the next few slides. The other bulleted points here are other projects that we undertook as part of this first SNEP grant. There's a very detailed study that goes into a great deal of technical and cost data on the potential for a municipal denitrifying septic system program or municipal innovative alternative septic system program. There's, there's a lot of interest in IA systems. There's, there's a lot of interest in IA systems, denitrifying septic systems, and so this study takes a close look at that, and found some challenges, frankly, from a cost perspective and a technologies perspective, in terms of achieving the desired amount of removal for, this was for Brewster. But if that's of interest, that study and all that information is on our website. We're also undertaking a nitrogen trading study that looks at how such a nitrogen trading study could be framed, how to establish the, you know, equivalency factors between communities, how to think through some of the economic potential. That study is just about completed, and that will be up on our website in the next probably two weeks. And also, some additional monitoring work was done for the municipal Shelf Fish Agriculture Program in Lonnie's Pond in Orleans. So, I just want to note those programs, they may be of interest to members of the board, or members of the public who are watching this, and all of that information is available on our website, PleasantBay.org. Now, as I mentioned, I want to talk a little bit about the updated M E P linked model. As you may recall, this is the model that was used as the basis for those total maximum daily loads that are sort of the underpinnings of Chatham's plan, as well as all of the other towns' plans. And so, this updated model has new hydrodynamics that take into account the changes in the inlet configuration that have happened since 2006, which have been significant, as you're well aware. All of the new water quality data that has been collected over that period of time. Updated watershed loading and water use information, so we have a much more accurate picture of what's going on with watershed nitrogen loading. And new detailed data on sediment regeneration. They resampled the bottom sediments to measure the amount of nitrogen that was basically regenerated from the bottom sediments, which is another major source of nitrogen, in addition to the watershed load. So, all of this gives us a model that is much better information on which our towns can make decisions going forward. We also had enough money in our budget to do a couple of scenario runs, but look forward to using this model to look at a number of different scenarios going forward. But we did want to run the strategies that are outlined in the Targeted Watershed Management Plan, so we took the plans as proposed in that Targeted Watershed Management Plan, which is the permit at this point, and ran those through the updated model. We also ran a scenario with some modifications that are already being contemplated by some of the member towns. And this table shares, you know, the bottom-line results of those two model scenarios. The S-Mass 2006-2010 Basis for Watershed Permit on the left, that column, basically reflects what's in the, you know, 2006 M E P report. Then, the middle column is the composite scenario, which is the modified Targeted Watershed Management Plan. And then, to the right is the Targeted Watershed Management Plan. And so, not surprisingly, the 2006 M E P numbers, those are the numbers that meet the primary stations and the secondary stations. We looked at the composite scenario, and we saw that two of the primary stations were compliant with thresholds. Only six of eight secondary stations were compliant. And the Targeted Watershed Management Plan scenario, seven of eight secondary stations in both of the primary stations were compliant. So, this is just to say that there's some tweaking that still needs to be done, not so much with Chatham's component of the plan, but with some of our other member communities. So, that's the information we will continue to refine and examine through additional modeling. So, just some kind of high-level, big-picture, you know, implications of this information. We do see an increase in watershed load from 2006, between 2006 and the updated model. So, that, on the one hand, is something to be concerned about. However, there also has been an increase in tidal flushing that more or less offset that increase in load. But as you've heard from Ted Keon, and Graham Geis, and others, we anticipate ongoing dynamic changes with the inlet configuration, and could see over time, a configuration that is frankly closer to what we had in 2006 than what we have today. So, we can't count on that forever, that additional flushing action. So, that's something to consider. We also identified some significant changes in attenuation factors in Muddy Creek and in Tarkhill Creek that will have some implications for Harwich and Brewster plans, and we're still taking a look at those numbers to understand them, and to understand their implications, and how they might influence the community's plans. Muddy Creek, what's going on there is that prior to the bridge construction, Upper Muddy Creek was more like a freshwater system. And freshwater systems basically take up or attenuate nitrogen. And so, now that the flushing is happening under the bridge, Upper Muddy Creek is more like a salt system. It's a saline system. It's no longer attenuating nitrogen. So, in effect, Harwich will get more credit for the sewer-ing that it's doing, because before, it wasn't going to get credit for nitrogen that was being taken up by the natural system. Now, the natural system's longer doing that, the town will get credit for that. So, it could affect their requirements in the Upper Muddy Creek Sub watershed. There's also the question of the fact that Chatham has, for very good and many reasons, decided to sewer more than, than the bottom line of what you need to, to meet the thresholds. So, there may be some beneficial impacts to the ecosystem. There may be some opportunities for trading, nitrogen trading. I think of the eight or nine subwatersheds that Chatham has in the Pleasant Bay watershed, you share with other towns, several of them, not all of them, but several of them. So, there may be some opportunities for nitrogen trading in some of those subwatersheds that may be worth exploration. And then, we want to continue our study of build-out impacts, as I mentioned earlier, as well as, you know, further understanding of those attenuation changes. So, just quickly, this is Chatham's snapshot for the 2021 annual report, pretty much as you had proposed in the Targeted Watershed Management Plan, except that you have done some sewer-ing work in the Muddy Creek Sub watershed sooner than planned, and are proposing some additional sewer-ing in Frostfish Creek and Muddy Creek between now and the end of the first five-year target date. So, in effect, you are going to be exceeding what you had set for the target, for the first five years of the permit, by quite a bit, which, you know, is, is great, to have that removal happening sooner in the system. So, that is essentially Chatham's picture. And going forward, we want to, you know, encourage the town to continue to accelerate those removals to the extent that that's possible, and, and obviously, there are many factors that you're weighing in those schedules. We want, and we're saying this to all of our member communities, to make sure that compliance is being achieved in all subwatersheds within our towns. And consider trading opportunities, and future load, and how that will be handled by the plan. So, with that, I will, happy to answer any questions. I appreciate your time this evening, and happy to hear your thoughts.
Thank you, Carol. That's very detailed, and I appreciate that. Let me start with Corey.
Sure. Hi, Carol. Thank you very much for the report. Nice seeing you again. Only question I did have is, you just mentioned it at the tail end of your report, you know, Chatham is going to be applauded for all the work they've put into this program, and we've really been ahead of the curve to some degree. But you mentioned the nitrogen trading credits, and can you just expand a little bit more about what that potentially might mean to Chatham and the program? A little bit more, please?
Sure. So, essentially, the concept here is that there may be subwatersheds that are shared by multiple communities, where one community has a removal technology that is very cost-effective, and sewer-ing is probably among the highest, most cost-effective approaches. And there may be subwatersheds, say Brewster, or even Harwich, where they, their options for removing their share of nitrogen in that sub watershed would be more expensive on a pound of nitrogen removal basis. And so, the opportunity is for the town with the higher-cost option to essentially provide value, or pay the town with the lower-cost removal option or technology, to remove more than they would need to, to compensate for that other town's load. So, it's a way of ensuring, or providing an opportunity for the most cost-effective technology to be maximized within a sub watershed. And I keep saying "within a sub watershed" because you, you don't, it's not necessarily something that you want to employ across subwatersheds, because you want those removals to happen where they need to happen, for ecological reasons. So, not to say that that couldn't happen, but it gets a lot more complicated, both from an ecological, as well as a financial or economic basis. So, that's essentially the opportunity, and where Chatham has additional capacity, that certainly would be, you know, an option to explore. So, the study that will be released fairly shortly will provide the outlines of how those kinds of arrangements could be pursued.
Great. Thank you very much.
Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask the same question, so Carol, I appreciate that answer, and thank you for a very comprehensive report. I appreciate the work that you and your organization do on this, and the work of Howard Chatham Representatives as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff, and then Shereen.
Carol, thank you once again. Excellent report. I find it fascinating, to be honest with you. I read all the detail. Really interested in the, you know, we don't need to go into it tonight, but really interested in the impact of the north cut on Pleasant Bay, and on the cleanliness of the water, the saltwater there. It's, I boat there all the time. It's phenomenal how clear, at times, that water is. So, it has to be helping the overall health of the, of the water, the overall watershed. Never mind Chatham, it's got to be helping Harwich, Brewster, and Orleans as well. I do boat there a lot, and I boat up into Orleans a lot, and it seems to me, or the farther up you get towards Meeting House, the more issues you have, just looking at water clarity. And do I understand, I think I understand from your report, that kind of the aquaculture initiative kind of didn't work as intended? Is that a fair comment?
Well, it's, it's worked, but I think the questions are scaling up to the degree that would be needed in Lonnie's Pond. Essentially, to accomplish the amount of nitrogen removal that would be, take care of the initial amount proposed, they would have to, you know, completely use that water body, which I think is creating other, you know, conflicts for the community. And there seem to be limited opportunities to expand that. I mean, Lonnie's Pond is sort of like the best location in Orleans. So, they have scaled back their expectations, or are scaling back their expectations for the amount of nitrogen removal that will be achieved through that program. But it, it has worked. I mean, the nitrogen removal has been, has been real and calculable. It's just not scalable at this point.
Yeah. Well, I just think it's fascinating. I'm going to stop there, but I just thank you for your efforts, and, and keep it going, because it's so important to us, so important. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Shereen?
Hi, Carol. Thanks for the report. It's always fascinating to hear all about Pleasant Bay, and, and all the good work that the Alliance has been doing with, with the four towns and whatnot. Really wish we could have something like this for Nantucket Sound, it'd be a much bigger project, but could certainly be benefiting in the same sort of way. So, I've been following some of the animal population studies that the Center for Coastal Studies has been doing, and, or had been doing a while, with your Bethnic, your Bethnic studies, that I guess were part of S-Mass or whatever. Is that an ongoing project, or does that have a complete and a stop date, studying all the little creatures in the, in the bay?
So, when the Center for Coastal Studies did that work a few years ago, I think, funded by Friends of Pleasant Bay, we coordinated with them to, to make sure that they sampled in all the locations that were addressed in the M E P report. They used a slightly different approach, or technique, or method, so the results aren't completely compatible, but do give us, you know, an ongoing picture. But to my knowledge, it's such an intensive effort, I'm not sure that they're, that's an ongoing thing. I think it's something that has to be done periodically.
I see Dr. Bob popped his head up, so.
Well, I was just going to say, this is, this is one of those areas that we had discussions with D E P about, that D E P might take on, just like they were doing for years with the eel graph surveys. D E P was regularly doing eel graph surveys every number of years. And Bentec and Fana was another area that there's been discussions with D E P about maybe the state taking that on, and doing it on, you know, a five-year schedule, or 10 years, or something like that, recognizing, you know, it's not easy to do, and as Carol said, there's concerns if you do it two different ways, you can't compare apples to apples kind of thing. So, that's, that's all still in the works, and we'll see where it ever ends up.
So, just another question, Bob, or Carol. Brewster's doing some work with their Captain's Golf Course. And are we in discussion with the local golf course in Chatham on any mitigation or anything that they could be doing to assist with, with nitrogen loading?
We have had various discussions with them over the years about their practices, you know. They are already doing many of the things that you would want to see them doing, in terms of reducing the amount of fertilizer and whatnot. So, Captain's in Brewster is a little bit different kind of scenario, because they're actually trying to use as an offset to avoid having to do something else, if you will.
Got it.
And they had the opportunity to do a lot of things that, you know, say, an eastward hoe didn't have, just because they're immediate proximity to the bay. But yeah, we've had various discussions with them over the years about changing some of the practices, and frankly, they've pretty well done already everything that they can do. But obviously, if something new comes along, we'll be talking to them again.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the report, Carol. It was really interesting to read.
Thank you, Shereen. Just, this is a little bit outside of Pleasant Bay, but, and maybe, Dr. Bob, you don't want to disappear yet, just, it's a question that I have. Two things. You talked about the alternatives to sewer-ing, and they didn't pan out to what you expected to be. I mean, I, for the last 20 years, a number of alternatives have come up, and they're always used as a reason not to sewer. Back in, down in, you know, around Virginia, Maryland, they've tried it, and they were having very difficult problems. And I, it seems to me, I thought they were getting better, but it seems to me, you usually pay a lot more to do it, and they really don't help you that much. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, I mentioned Bob, Dr. Bob, fertilizer, isn't Mashpee doing something to control fertilizer in public areas? Not only public areas, but on, on private, use of fertilizer throughout the town? And it's not necessarily for Pleasant Bay, but how do you control something like that, one, and does that make sense? Because I've been asked that question.
Yeah. The fertilizer issue, keep in mind, Chatham has had, the Board of Health in Chatham passed a fertilizer regulation, I want to say 10 years ago, maybe even a little bit more, where we put limitations on the type of fertilizer you can use, the amount of fertilizer you can use, the time of year that it can be applied. But as you said, it's the, it's the enforcement of that that is really the, the difficult part. And, you know, while we get credit from D E P for having that regulation, and other towns that have done it, Mashpee and, and others, including some of the Pleasant Bay towns, we all get credit from D E P for that, because we have that regulation on the books. As a scientist, I have real issues with it, because I just don't think it's, you know, it's what I call a feel-good regulation, but I'm not sure it's really being all that effective, you know, in terms of reducing, you know, the use of fertilizer in the watershed. But the flip side to that is, overall, remember, 80% of the nitrogen's coming from septic systems. Fertilizer is about 5% of the load across the watershed. So, you know, it's, you're starting out with a very small number, so if you get anybody that, you know, kind of complies, you're ahead of the game. But, you know, that is one of the difficulties, is there really is, you know, no way to necessarily enforce that kind of regulation, other than, you know, educating homeowners, and educating landscapers, and all about the proper. And there was a lot of effort 10 years ago with the county extension, you know, educating landscapers on, you know, organic type landscapers on, you know, organic type fertilizers and when to apply them. You know, we've had on our books, regulation going on 20 years now requiring six inches of topsoil on new construction areas because it was found that if you put enough topsoil in, you don't get as much leaching of the nitrogen to begin with. So you try to do all those kinds of things to make it better.
Thank you very much, Bob. Any other comments from the board? Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Bob. Very, you know, it was comprehensive and I really appreciate it. Thanks again.
Great, thank you so much for your time.
Okay, next we're up to consider a date for calling a special town meeting and warrant articles and our town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So since we last discussed this as a board, staff has come up with a recommendation that we do call a special town meeting, but that it be held in an outdoor venue at Veterans Field. With the health data coming in, it's been the recommendation by public safety staff as well as our public health staff to do that. So with that, and since our last meeting, we've come up with a few dates and before you turn the page, I just want to give a little explanation for the public. So for a special town meeting, it requires a 14-day posting and within that 14 calendar days, we need to hold a voter registration. So that's a minimum amount of time to post the warrant. But what we do know is that we need a lot more time for education of the public. And in this particular instance, we do need some more time, which we're hoping to have completed, is filing our balance sheet with the Department of Revenue so that we get our free cash and our water retained earnings certified so that we could use for this meeting. So one of the articles that we're presenting is for $750,000 and that's for design, a design project, and I'll get into that. But that funding source will be those retained earnings that will be newly certified. So we expect to have that done and certified by the DOR in about two weeks or less and that's one of the reasons why we're pushing this out into November. So with the primary purpose of investing in our drinking capital, our drinking capital infrastructure, I also recommend that the board, to the extent possible, to keep the warrant to a minimum number so that we can get in, have a thoughtful discussion and depending on what time it is, because of the time of year, if it's a weekday or the weekend, allow for time for the staff to also set up and break down. So the last comment is, is that we had our special town meeting by petition in 2020 that was on October 3 at 1:00 p.m. And we were lucky enough to have a gorgeous day for that. So on your second page, we've come up with recommendations for dates and within those proposed dates, the last date to register to vote and most importantly, the warrant closing date. Shawna has also put in some additional information about sunrise and average daily high temperatures. The first date that we considered is Saturday, October 2. But for that date, I'm not available and neither is Chief Paulina or Dr. Bob, so that's one consideration, but it is an earlier date that's available. With the outdoor town meetings, there's also, there's also some discussion about having a tent. And tents are pretty difficult for us right now and it's more about availability versus cost, but they do run about $12,000 to $14,000 for a rental. And that we haven't had tents at past town meetings, I think it could be doable just depending on the date and the time and the weather pattern as may be predictable. The second outdoor date we're looking at would be on a Friday. It's Friday, October 15 and that would be at 5:30 p.m. Another weekday is October 19, a Tuesday at 5:30 p.m. And then we also wanted to put forward a Saturday date as we discussed last time. It happens to be the same day as Oktoberfest and that's October 23. We did propose a 9:30 a.m. start to that. It might be a little challenging only because of the two to three hours it takes to set up for the town meeting. We usually set it up that morning, but that potentially could get the public still to the Oktoberfest activities later that morning or early afternoon. So that on Saturday, October 23, we had thought the earliest possible would be a 9:30 a.m. date. And again, the last date that we have, or second to last date we have is another Monday, October 25. That would be at 5:30 p.m. And then what we thought would probably be the most fun date to have at town meeting, but maybe a little chilly, could be on Saturday, October 30 at 11 a.m. That's a Saturday and we can all wear a crazy hat or a costume to that, but that probably is the last possible day with the weather conditions to be favorable so that we can have the meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything from the board? Everyone is a wonderful option. Go ahead, Shereen.
So I think I agree that this, the priority and why we're having this meeting is, it's about the water infrastructure and that should be our focus of this meeting. And, you know, this is a very difficult, very difficult, challenging kind of way to conduct a meeting. We've seen that. We saw this with the annual town meeting. You know, education to the public is really key to this. Presentations are necessary. And I would feel, as much as I'd like to have it the first Saturday, I'd feel more comfortable if, you know, to have Dr. Dunkinson be able to make some sort of presentations on the water. He's articulated all the issues, even Tom's there as well, the director of DPW. But also we'd have to find out if, whether our consultants or Sampson and Wesson can, you know, would be able to speak, you know, at the meeting as well. I'd like to have it as soon as possible. It's unpredictable. I've seen snow in October, you know, we have, but typically early October is, you know, a nice time of year still. I've also seen beautiful weather at the end of the month as well. It's just, we just don't know. Those are my thoughts. I prefer, I think I'm just leaning towards probably, if we could do the Saturday, the second, that would be great, but I think the next available date might be the way to do it as well, as long as we can, you know, keep it short and to the point.
Yeah, my, before I go down the list, I just want to say, I tend to, when I looked at this, I had a, I tried to do a chart. You look at the temperature and you look at the weather that can happen, it gets more problematic the later you get in October. 64, 57 doesn't sound like much, but it is a large difference. Question is, it's at night and yeah, you have the lights on, but if we do something at night, that's going to limit how much time we're going to have. Plus, maybe wearing a coat or something to then. That's just some comments from now. I forgot who was first. I'll go Jeff and then Cory and Dean, okay? Jeff?
So I agree that it's critical to have Dr. Bob there. I also agree that these evenings could tend to be very cool. So I'm looking, I prefer Saturday, the 23 in the morning before Oktoberfest. I am not here on the 15th, so I strongly do not prefer that one. But, you know, I just think Tuesday on the 19th, at, you know, 6 o'clock, the sunset's going to happen and it's going to be cold. I think it's going to be cold. I think we're at risk of being cold. Anyway, we're not going to melt from the cold and we can bundle up, but I think we want to get our corn there. Thanks. So I prefer Saturday, the 23rd.
Thank you. Cory?
Well, we all know the weather's unpredictable, so there's no magic ball that's going to tell us what day is the best. I mean, I was going to say I would do Tuesday, the 19th, so, you know, I'm an odd man out too. I guess the question is, if we have a rain date, how does that work out? That's another layer of planning.
So for a Saturday, we would have a rain date, typically Monday, so that would get us to Monday. If you wanted the 23rd of October, that would get us to Monday, the 25th.
Okay. And Dean?
For a Saturday on a Monday, what, so we did it on a Tuesday or Friday, would be like the next Saturday?
Next day?
Next day.
Mr. Chair, I just have to check. So one of the things we have to be considerate about is the audio vendor and having, while the cords and so forth could be weatherproof, I don't know if I can have an immediate next day rain date, so that's something we would have to check. But typically, we do it a day later, so skip a day. And Sundays, we typically haven't done it except for this continued date of our annual town meeting.
Okay. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jill, thank you to you and Shawna. I applaud you for the determination that we should do this outside. I thought that Peter and Shereen made excellent comments about that at our last meeting. I think I'm sort of defaulted to the 23rd and reluctantly so. Would have been ideal to have it on the 2nd, I think, but I do think we need to have the town leadership there. And I like the idea of having it in the morning on that Saturday because it, once you get beyond October 15, the rest of the month generally turns pretty cold. So the only other thing I'll say, and we're going to talk about the warrant articles, I totally agree with what Jill said. We should keep this warrant very, very lean. The focus should be water and we should make it possible to have a very efficient town meeting, give people the opportunity to say what they want to say, but I don't think we want to keep people on October 23 outside for, you know, three or four hours. I don't think that's advisable. And are we going to have the carts, the golf carts for, to escort some of the senior residents who might otherwise be reluctant to come? We heard some comment about the town meeting logistics from the chairman of the, the chair of the Council on Aging. So as long as we have those in place and advertised, so I think that would be helpful. But thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else?
I'm fine with the 23rd date. It's fine.
Yeah, I prefer the morning prior rather than the night. I prefer the 19th as a date rather than the 23rd, but I think I lean towards the morning meeting as opposed to the late night meeting. Just thought, sun comes up. Anything else?
Just one other thing, I don't recall if I mentioned that. So for a citizen petition for a special town meeting, it requires 100 signatures that are certified by the town clerk.
Okay. Let's go into the warrant articles and then we'll go to the public. We've seen these a number of times. Do you want to talk to them, Jill?
Yeah, sure. So we put together a draft warrant, so just for explanation too, the resolution on page one of this version, that's actually something that's subject to the select board. So if you wanted to make any changes to that, you could do that before you post the warrant. So I just wanted to call your attention to that, not that I'm recommending anything. And then the warrant articles, these again are a draft, we had thought we could take care of one business item and this was a prior year's bills appropriation. These bills were not paid because they weren't submitted by June 30 of this year, 2021, and that's the end of our fiscal year. So if the board was amenable to it, these are the items that we would place and it totals a little bit more than $4,800. And the vote required is a nine-tenths majority. So, and we list the vote required, the quantum vote, in the warrant articles, the posted warrant. The next item is something that you've been hearing about, but not necessarily have seen it in writing, and this is the $4.5 million investment for paying the cost to construct wells 10 and 11. And because of it coming from the water fund, which is paid by ratepayers, it requires a two-thirds vote at the town meeting, but does not require a ballot question like we do with other capital funding articles. And as you had seen, we have Tom Barr in on the meeting tonight as well as Dr. Bob, if there's any questions to how the explanation is worded. The warrant article itself has already gone through review of our bond council, so that is essentially the way that it would appear unless there's any type of graphical errors. Do you want me to go to the second one quickly? Sure. Okay, the second one is the design and new treatment of a facility to address PFAS at Trainee Field Wells 5 and 8. And this is for the design only. The intent would have the design completed hopefully by the May 2022 annual town meeting so we can put an article on that if the board wishes to actually fund it. And again, this is just a simple majority because it's not a borrowing. It would be paid out of the water retained earnings that Alex will have certified in a week or two. And then the last article, we had it as a placeholder simply because it didn't get brought up at the May 2021 annual town meeting. And that was the board's discussion about funding improvements to, safety improvements to Oldcomers Road. I don't have an updated quote for that. Back in, I think, June of 2020, there was a potential cost of $30,000. I don't know how soon we can get the equipment, so if the board wanted to defer it, we would definitely put it on the May 22 annual town meeting, but it's just something we've had in here as a placeholder. And then as I briefly alluded to, depending on the cost of the source study for the PFAS, I think that we will have funds available, but we hope to get that proposal within, probably by the end of next week, the latest. That might be an additional appropriation and that would be from the water retained earnings as well, so it'll be no impact to the tax rate per se or taxpayers. And then as you saw, there's a couple of emails. One was an email from a resident requesting that the board take action to amend the general bylaws as it relates to the Affordable Housing Trust. There's special legislation that was approved at the annual town meeting that I don't even actually have a bill number yet, but it's been forwarded to the legislature. I don't know sequencing if this has to be done. Typically, we wait until the legislation's engrossed, so that's one thing for the board to consider. That was the two-step process we did when the board had amended the charter for the select board reference and then we did the general bylaw amendment afterwards, but I know the person who's requesting that is on the meeting. And that's it. The one item that we talked about, and I said this at the last meeting, the Monomoy Regional School Agreement Amendment, that our regional school agreement actually says it has to be done at an annual town meeting, so that's why it's not being put forward tonight. And that's it. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick, you know, the study for PFAS, that would come out of what kind of funds right now that you have that you said you might not have to come to, which is, it's not free cash or no?
No, so what I had committed to is there's funds, what we call the town manager's consulting and engineering account that is funded each year. And the only unknown I have is how much the source study might be, but again, we're having conversations with a potential entity to do the study. We have a meeting coming up at the end of this week and I'm hoping to get a proposal from them by next week.
Okay, and is there a hint that we may get a petition? I guess there always is an opportunity.
There always is, so just to note that the requisite number is at least 100 registered voters, but the town clerk always encourages more just for certification.
Thank you. Comments from the board, questions? Shereen?
I want to speak to the Traffic Safety Committee recommendation, proposed the placeholder.
Yeah.
You know, Kim provided us with an update of our minutes from last, I think, June 23, 2020. And there was the appropriation side of this, which Jill alluded to, about $30,000 for changes in the stop signs and whatnot. But there were other action items here that I don't think are costs related to town meeting. And I'm wondering if we could delay this article in the interest of brevity for the meeting to May, but take the, some of the recommended actions that don't have costs associated with it. You know, if we could change a street, you know, move a street sign, you know, do some painted paintings on the roadway sort of stuff and then just sort of put this in place for May. That would be what I would like to see.
Yeah, I'm the one that was mostly involved with that. I'll make a comment on that.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, you know, it started, I don't know, a couple of years ago. There is an issue at Oldcomers Road and the intersection of Trainee Fields. And if I count the number of sirens that I heard pulling over people, they did gangbuster business along Oldcomers Road. Comers Road. I shouldn't put it that way. Because, but, but there, there was always a problem at Training Fields and whatever, people going through it all the time. I'm sort of, I don't know if there's anything you could pull out of the budget to help with it at all. You mean, the simple things. I'm kind of leaning to trying to take care of that intersection if we can. You would think that it would be a no-brainer, but it just adds another complication to our meeting. I, I'd like to listen to what, what some of you are thinking about it, but it's, they, they, the Traffic Safety Committee and Lieutenant Goddard made a strong support for doing something at that intersection, and they've had problems there. So, Corey, then Jeff?
There's a no-win situation about trying to post. We probably should have picked it up for the annual town meeting. We didn't, you know, pushing it off later, you hope everything goes fine. I'm, I'm a big supporter of getting improvements in that area. One of my relatives was involved in an auto crash a couple of years ago back there, so making it safe, all, all behind it. You know, I don't want to see anyone getting any accidents or worse. So, I mean, I, you know, delaying it makes me a little bit nervous, but for brevity for our meeting, I could reluctantly support that with the understanding of any steps we could take in the meantime, that we take. If we can do anything, you said move the sign, whatever, we start making action now. And if something pops up that we can have any funding available to do things earlier, then great, but, you know, at least we have a deadline of next May to finalize it. But yeah.
Thank you, Corey. Jeff?
Yeah, I, I just soon do something now. Why, why, it's $30,000 for signage? Can't, can't we find $30,000 and do the signs?
Well, signage and marking the drive, and then maybe getting a, something there to tell everybody to slow down and what to see. It's, it's.
Why can't we do it? Why, why do we need an article?
Go ahead.
So, what was recommended was install four LED stop signs at Old Comers Road in Trainee Field, and purchase and install two radar speed display signs at Old Comers Road. And then the other, move the street sign in intersection. I have to actually check to see if that hasn't already been done.
Yeah.
Yet. But those are the, the two or four mentioned ones are the cost items.
And the total was $30,000, or was something north of $30,000?
$30,000 was the high point, and they wanted to find solar panels so that they didn't have to actually do an electrical connection, but I'm not sure that's still the case. So, we have a little bit of time for me to touch base with DPW.
I, I would prefer that, just to get the kind of the facts out there. If we can find the money somewhere to do it now, I'd just soon do it now and do the improvements without. I mean, I remember our conversation, and I think there was deep and wide consensus that we do something about the intersection. I also think in my heart of hearts that the traffic has decreased in an intersection because of, folks were taking that route because of the, the noise on, on Route 28 during construction. But I, you know, I, I want to make it safe, so.
It's true.
Well, I think that larger trucks now are not taking that route. I mean, I, I look in the morning. But anyway, I'd just soon do something now, so I'd appreciate if Jill would see what's out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I saw this on the agenda for tonight, I was not too keen on, on putting it on the warrant because I think the warrant, as Shereen has suggested, should be focused, and I've suggested, should be focused on water. And then, late this afternoon, Cameron sent us the minutes from our meeting of the 23rd, June 23rd, 2020. And that's what I think Jill was quoting from. It looks like there's only one item, the moving of the street sign, that doesn't have a fiscal note. And then I saw that the motion was offered by me to approve that recommendation from the Traffic Safety Committee. I had forgotten all about that. So, I guess I'm inclined, I'd be inclined to, to try to do something now for safety reasons, but I, perhaps in light of what Jeff was asking, if we, perhaps we don't have to take any action on this tonight, this particular potential article, and have you come back to us with some more information if there is some funding source internally available now without having to go to town meeting. I, I, again, would like to keep the warrant lean, but that would be my suggestion for what to do tonight, or what not to do, actually.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that?
That's good.
No, yeah, and I would agree. We should keep this as clean as possible. We're going to be doing something in the morning, which is better than at night, but hopefully, we'll see. Let's see.
So, Mr. Chair, yeah, I have, the Finance Director has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just as far as the funding goes, we didn't have any funding appropriated the previous town meeting, so that's why it's before you right now. We don't have an appropriation for this, and I don't think there's any available funds within the DPW to address it, so that's why I see it before you tonight.
Okay. Jeff?
Not that I doubt you, Alex, but just, if we could just double, double-check and then, and then report back.
What is that, Chapter 90?
It should be Chapter 90. I just checked with Tom to see what we've got. It's, it's not state-funded. It's our road, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's Chapter 90 available or eligible, but we'll certainly check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else before I go to the public? Okay, let's see. We had some people that were concerned. Any, I see a raise hand. Elaine, go ahead.
Thank you. My first question is about the town meeting date. I might have missed it, but is, what are the reasons why we can't have it on Saturday, the 9th, or Saturday, the 16th at noon? Because 5:30, obviously, is way too late and way too cold. 9:30 is a little early for some of the demographic. So, I was wondering that. And then, secondly, what kind of a quorum do we need in order to actually have a meeting? Because, under those conditions, I think there's a possibility we might not have a quorum, if it's, you know, at night or really early.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so I have to check, but I believe one of those dates was the Columbus Day, Indigenous Day long weekend, and that was the reason that we stayed away from it. I just have to look at my calendar to see if that was actually the, what that date was. And the quorum requirement is 100 registered voters. I do, I'm waiting to hear back, but I do wanted to, I did want to research if the quorum requirements could be waived under the previous governor's emergency order. So, at that time, they were allowing for quorum reductions to be voted by the select board, and that, I just don't have an answer yet because we're not under an emergency declaration. But as you know, the virtual meeting and waiver to the open meeting law, that's still in effect until April. And so, I didn't have that answer for tonight, but I'm waiting to get it.
Okay. What was the other part, Elaine?
Well, that, that was the first one, whether it's the 9th or the 16th, if there's something that can be done with the other Saturday, and the quorum question. But then, in terms of Article 2, if my memory serves me correctly, I've not seen this $4.5 million number, and I don't have my file with me. But I think originally, the wells 10 and 11 were 95% complete, and the number was going to be, I don't know, 2.9, but then there was grant money available, so it would be 1.3. So, obviously, something more is being done here, and it must be the chemical feed building. But I guess I wanted to know what is involved in, why do we need that versus an iron and manganese plant? And is the 4.5 million inclusive of that, or is an INM plant? Because we do know there's iron and manganese in these wells. So, how much is the iron and manganese and PFAS going to cost on top of 4.5? And then, I guess my other question is, are we going to test those wells before we spend the 4.5 to find out exactly what we need? Is, are we going to need the chemical feed plant and an INM, or is there a way to combine them? So, I guess I'm, I'm just confused at this number. It seems high for what we're getting out of it. If we spend all that money and then find out we need an INM plant because we have PFAS.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Elaine. Dr. Duncan's on. I see him, but I don't see his hand up. Bobby, you available, or?
I think Tom Barr can address that.
Okay, Tom.
I'm here as well.
Yeah.
Tom, I don't know, do you want to chime in?
Yeah, so, right now, the 4.5 million is the design and build for wells 10 and 11. That was pretty much completed back in 2010. They had that design done. We will be doing a few upgrades to it to accommodate for the future build-out if we do need to have PFAS removal. So, the four and a half million is the number to build two wells, the two pumps to get into the treatment plant. So, each well will have a line going to one treatment building, which will then be supplied into the distribution system. So, the 4.5 is the build of those wells without PFAS removal, but it will be designed for future expansion of iron and manganese and PFAS. Bob, anything else you want to add to that, or?
No, I think that you captured it.
Okay.
Okay, so, it'd be the 4.5 to get them up and running, and assuming we don't need an iron and manganese, but that would be separate. And those run about an additional, what, eight, seven, eight, nine million for an iron and manganese and PFAS removal? And so, for this 4.5, how soon would those wells be operational?
So, hopefully, if, if we get the approval to do this, then they'll start, they'll go out to bid for build, and we're hoping to have them by next summer would be fantastic, but realistically, we'd probably be seeing them in the fall of 2022.
So, I actually should be a Debbie Downer here, but is there any way we can test 10 and 11 to find out what the PFAS are before we spend the 4.5, so that we can reassess? Because then we're not going to be able to use them if we have PFAS and we have to remove the iron and manganese. So, is there a way to find that out so that maybe we have a new plan to say, instead of that massive build-out for down the road, that we instead build an iron and manganese so that we can actually use them? Does that make any sense?
Yeah, so, right now, the levels for iron and manganese, so I think, I think you're mixing iron and manganese and PFAS as the same thing. They're two separate things. So, the iron and manganese are levels, we're not at the MCL for iron and manganese in that area from our prolonged pumping tests that we did back in 2017, 18. So, it's not called for at this time. We're just building, when we design it, it'll have the design to add on at a cheaper rate because we'll be adding on to something that's already been designed. So, I guess, to answer your question, the 4.5 will get us the facility that we need to supply the water, to provide the town with the, to meet the demand, and we'll have the design ready to go if we need to install iron and manganese down the road, and then PFAS treatment after that. But as we mentioned earlier, the PFAS is not showing that high in the area. Both the Salt Chatham Well Field and the Morton Road Treatment Facility are showing non-detect, meaning there's no PFAS in that general area. And Mill Pond is right down the street from Morton Road. So, we're not seeing any signs of PFAS in that area from those other well sites.
Okay. I, but I do understand that PFAS, if PFAS show up, then the first thing you have to do is an iron and manganese, because you can't treat the PFAS. And that was my only concern, that if we find out there are PFAS, then everything's on hold, so we can build an iron and manganese.
And you can treat PFAS without iron and manganese removal, depending on what your iron and manganese levels are. So, we would have to do stuff, do testing, which we would be doing once these wells are online. We'll be do, they'll be put onto a quarterly sampling schedule by Mass DEP for things like secondary contaminants, which are iron and manganese. They would be put onto the quarterly PFAS sampling, which we would take samples from those wells once they're up online and operating. So, all that sampling will be done, so we'll be able to monitor it and know if we're going to have to add the extra treatment down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Let's see. I see.
Mr. Chair, also, I discovered, I just got confirmation that our audio vendor is not available on October 16th, and that's why that's not being proposed.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you. Let's see. I see George Meyer's hand up. Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Upon reviewing the proposed special town meeting warrant, ten to do plan for October, Rick Levin and I were so much surprised the warrant did not include an article to amend General Bylaw 10-5A to change the makeup of the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust. At your October 13 meeting last year, such a bylaw change was urged by the chair and appeared to be acceptable to the entire select board. That bylaw change will allow replacement of the five selectmen and two community member trustees with two selectmen, a member of the Community Housing Partnership, and four community members with expertise in housing development and financing. It is true that the new home rule petition to revise the Affordable Housing Trust had not been drafted last October, but it has now been approved by both you and town meeting. That approval included the new trustee makeup, that as you know, will require amending the bylaw. We agreed with you last year that a bylaw change was needed, and we support amending bylaw 10-5A as soon as possible. This will be an important step toward establishing Chatham's Affordable Housing Bonafides. We believe it should be accomplished at the next town meeting, in this case, the upcoming special town meeting in October. In our view, there's no reason to wait until the home rule petition legislation is enacted by the general court, which could take several years. In the meantime, Chatham's existing Affordable Housing Trust with a new makeup of trustees can operate much in the way you envisioned for the new housing trust with two elected selectmen trustees and five trustees appointed for their established expertise in housing development and finance. These new trustees will not only improve the effectiveness of the existing housing trust that you recognize, but also will enable the town to hit the ground running whenever the new housing trust legislation is enacted. I do understand that there are other important issues to be addressed at a special town meeting, but as we all know, affordable housing is perhaps the most important issue facing the town. Assuming the board is still enthusiastic for the new trustee makeup, we urge you to add an article to special town meeting warrant to amend General Bylaw 10-5A. Such an article is unlikely to extend the time of town meeting because town meeting has already approved the legislation that includes the new trustee makeup. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Bring it back to the board. Any comments? I guess we had, Dean, go ahead.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the, the public comments tonight. I appreciated Elaine's questions because it brought some clarification to some of the issues. And I appreciate Mr. Meyer's comments as well, but he and I had communicated yesterday, and he forwarded me his proposed comments for tonight, which I encouraged him to make. But I, I, I don't really share the conclusion that, that he reaches. I just think this warrant should be focused on water. I think we did say at our revised goal-setting discussion more recently that we thought water was the number one issue in town. And I know we think of affordable housing and the senior center, and a couple of other things are right up there, too, but I think water is number one. It's the most pressing. And I think when you put articles that are substantive on the same warrant, it does have the potential to distract or discourage people from coming. I want to get a quorum. I want these water articles adopted in whatever form we put them forward. And I really do think we should follow the same process we followed with the change in the select board. We could have gone forward to town meeting with a, a name change for the select board before the legislation was, was enacted, contingent upon the enactment of the legislation. We even. We even considered that early on, but we didn't. We waited for the legislature to make the change, and then we went forward to town meeting. And if we felt that this was something that needed to be done immediately, we could have gone to the June 22nd town meeting with this change, and we did not do that. I think it would have introduced a level of confusion with all the other housing articles we had, particularly the article on the trust. And the article on the trust is a comprehensive reorganization of the trust. It introduces a new trust component for attainable housing. It does make the changes that Mr. Myers has proposed for the Board of Trustees. I think those are good changes. I agree with George and Rick on this, but I just don't think I want to see this article on the warrant or this special town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Shereen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I did reach out to Mr. Myers and Mr. Levitt on this issue as well as they approached me, and I agree with Dean's sentiment, and I want to reiterate that I had the same thoughts on the process as you did, Dean, when I responded to them. And I feel that we've put this infrastructure in place with a lot of thought and care and consideration, and we're not dismissing that this is something important, but, you know, in the interest of wanting this to be a one-off sort of special town meeting focused on the water issue, giving the opportunity for the public to be able to vet this thoroughly and get enough questions, you know, out there answered about why we're doing what we're doing with water, I think it's important that we stick to a more thematic approach to this, to this as a board.
Thank you. My feeling on this is also to keep this focused, but more importantly, we moved ahead with a number of housing articles in the warrant. We were successful with many, not successful in others. To move ahead now, we need to get West Chatham done. We don't need a trust to do that. We need, we need that trust, the new trust, in my opinion, to help us further how we proceed from now on in a number of ways to get areas where we could do affordable and attainable housing and to have the expertise on a trust that we feel is necessary. So I believe that we can wait on this until we get legislation. I believe, I would think that's, that's not going to be a problem. I would not expect that to be a problem. But what we need to do now in the next six months is to get West Chatham moving, period. That's what needs to get done, and we need to do that in a manner that a municipal government does it, not just throw it out there, but we need to do it with public input and then move ahead quickly. And that, those are my thoughts. Any other thing else from the board? Deff?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm certainly philosophically absolutely in agreement with Mr. Myers and Mr. Levitt's effort. I just think the timing's wrong, and I also would like to hear from the General Court. I think that George has assumed that it's going to take years or has made the comment it's going to take years. I don't think on this particular Home Rule petition that this one will be, will take all that much time, and I think hopefully we'll hear in the next two or three months, certainly before next town meeting. Now, if we haven't heard by the time next town meeting rolls around and we need to deal with the makeup of the Affordable Trust with greater alacrity, then I think we do so then. But I think, and again, I'm very much philosophically in sync with them, but, and as the, as our Home Rule petition that was passed certainly, you know, portrays. So anyway, I'd like to hear back from where we are with the General Court. I think we keep a single focus on water and, but we knew, we don't lose track of this, obviously, and we keep, keep hounding the General Court on where we're at with it. I think they're going to turn that around quicker than, you know, certainly the transfer fee. Those are my thoughts, and I really appreciate their input, always appreciate Mr. Myers and Mr. Levitt's input.
Oh, very much. Thank you. Thank you, and I agree. Okay, Corey?
No, I just want to keep the special town meeting as focused as possible, period.
Okay. What we should do is come up with a motion on which date we want to do. I heard a, I don't want to put it in your mind, but I heard a consensus of the 23rd, I think.
I'll make that motion to call a special town meeting on Saturday.
No, October.
On Saturday, October 23rd, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. at Veterans Field.
Second.
Again, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just before you take a vote.
Yep.
I sent a text to Channel 18. Mark, can you confirm that you guys can do 9:30?
We can change it to 10.
So Dallas and I are available, we can do 9:30, but we haven't checked that time with our vendor. It should theoretically be no problem, but we would want to confirm that with them first.
Then I'm going to amend that to a time to be determined.
Or contingent?
Do contingent, let's do 9:30 contingent on the audio vendor's availability, and if there's any change, we can come back to the board.
Second.
Second on that, yeah.
Discussion, Dean?
Is there any sentiment to make it at 10? I know that's the date of the Oktoberfest, but...
We don't have a schedule of their events yet, that's the only thing that's pending still.
Are we going to have parking issues?
Bottom line, there's no perfect date available to us. We're going to get a hiccup with any day we can come up with where some kind of issue with this planning or that planning, yes. I think the Oktoberfest does start earlier in the morning, so you're going to have downtown activity starting earlier, parking may or may not be an issue, the weather, there's no perfect date, we're just going to roll the dice on this one, you know, that's the reality of it.
9:30 really a problem? I mean...
I only bring it up because, you know, one member of the public suggested 10 o'clock. I mean, it's okay either way with me, but just wondered.
Okay, any other, no other discussion, I'll bring it to a vote then, if we can.
So can we have the, what is the motion again? Is it, was there a contingency offered to it?
You want to read it again, or I can paraphrase it?
Yeah, you can paraphrase it.
A motion to have our special town meeting on Saturday, October 23rd at 9:30 a.m., contingent upon the audio availability, right?
Does that suffice legally because of the contingency?
I think, I think it does. I know that that was a date that was floated to the audio vendor, it's just making sure that time. I mean, if, if it's a go, then there's no further action at the board. If we need to have a quick agenda item at the next meeting for any changes, that's the joint meeting with the Airport Commission, then we can do that on the 14th. Nonetheless, we would, for that meeting to occur on the 23rd, the warrant can be closed no later than October 5th, so we would have another meeting or two to finalize that.
Yeah, I was just inquiring as to legality of the vote, but it sounds like it's okay, so it's fine.
Okay, that's fine. Any other comments? All right, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for all the comments.
Do we want any votes on the articles tonight?
We weren't going to, the articles tonight?
We're posted for you to, to place if you want, and if you want to vote a recommendation. I just don't know if you want to see some additional budget detail or if you have enough information.
I mean, I personally am okay with voting Article 1, 2, and 3.
Yes, I am.
Unless, unless we are planning to change numbers and on the water articles, it doesn't sound like they were.
I don't, this is the latest information that we had as of Friday morning.
Do I have, do we have to take a separate vote on each article? Can I have a comprehensive consolidated motion? I'll offer a consolidated motion to place Articles 1, Prior Fiscal Year Bill's Payment Appropriation, Article 2, Water Capital Wells Numbers 10 and Number 11, and Article 3, Water Capital Design of New Treatment Facility to Address PFAS at Training Field Wells 5 and 8. That's a motion to place those three articles.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, thank you, Dean.
Want a motion to recommend tonight? Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board recommend approval of Articles 1, 2, and 3 to town meeting, to the special town meeting for October 23rd.
Second.
Okay, discussion, none. Shereen, vote, sorry, Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you. Okay, down to our last committee appointments. We have before us the Cultural Committee, Waterways Committee, and the Conservation Committee. We'll start with the Cultural, excuse me, Cultural Council, five vacancies for terms to June 20, June 30th, 2024, two vacancies for terms to June 30th, 2023. We have two interviewees. Corey?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Suzanne Batika to the Cultural Council through June 30th, 2024, unless sooner or later, her successor is appointed.
Second.
You have a second, any discussion? None for a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Another...
Mr. Chair, I have moved to appoint Susanna Foster to the Cultural Council through June 30, 2024, unless sooner or later, her successor is appointed.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. To the Waterways Committee, we have one vacancy for the term of June 30th, 2022. We interviewed one individual, Andrew Dunn IV, interviewed on September 2nd.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Andrew Dunn IV to the Waterways Advisory Committee until June 30, 2022, unless sooner or later, her successor is appointed.
Second.
All right, discussion, none. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Conservation Committee, Conservation Commission, one vacancy for an unexpired term to June 30th, 2024, and one vacancy for an unexpired to June 30th, 2022. We have a recommendation from the Conservation Committee to elevate one of their associates to fulfill an unexpired position.
Mr. Chair, move to appoint, actually elevate Mary Sullivan to the Conservation Commission until June 30, 2024, unless sooner or later, her successor is appointed.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. That's the end of the meeting, and motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Okay, let's have a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Good evening, Chatham, and thank you for all your, everyone's participation. Good night now.